And of the Holy Spirit, Amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts as we begin this regular session. Thank you for gathering us once again with a shared purpose, to serve our people and to work for the common good. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in every discussion and decision we make today. Help us to speak with respect, listen with understanding, and act with integrity. May our hearts remain open to collaboration and our minds focus on what truly benefits our constituents. Lord, grant us patience in times of disagreement, courage in making difficult choices, and humility to accept what is best for the greater good. Bless everyone present here, our leaders, staff, and all those who serve with good health, strength, and dedication. As we start this session, may everything we do bring honor to your name and contribute to the progress and peace in our community. We humbly ask all these in your most holy name, Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, Amen.
Mga kababayan ang pampansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang matibing, kadas na sinahanan, palang ng puso sa iti ko'y kuwai. Upang hirang, huwag na lang mahiti, sa manlulupi, ikapasi si Tim. Sa ngatap, tutok sa simoyat, sa ngatikaw pa raw. Ayun na tap, kula kaowin sa pagkayang ni namahan. Ang isakap, matawat huwetan, kay kana tiniti. Ang ituwi na talo ngayakayak, ang may di ba tiniti. Upang na talo ngangwar, labig pa si ka, huwetan ang it sa piriko. Ang ni kaya na pa, kayo nami, ang pama kayo na hiyusayon. Oko besya na ni namahan, san su bangan ang dabo. Batwa kaun na madayaw, ya na kuyon yang utaw, malipayon kay palangka kaun ng Diyos. Matapayang kalupaan mo, yang tanu mapungahon. Dakat mo mga suba, maday kayang hisga, kabuhian kawilihan ang kanan. Umahan na dabo oriental, langit mo mapawahay. Yang kabutayan, yang kapatagan, maya manay magandahay. Mas dihain pa kami kumatuh, kami mo ulihan ikan mo. Garbu na mina dabo wenyo, yang pakserbis ang kadyawan mo.
May I request everyone to please take your seat? Good afternoon to all the members of this august body and to all the persons here inside the session hall. Before we proceed with our session, may I ask the secretary to call the roll for us to determine whether we have a quorum?
The honorable members of this august chamber are requested to say aye as I call the roll. Honorable Maria Glenn Damonet Rabat Gaeta is on a special privilege leave. Honorable Beverly M. Dayanan. Honorable Harold A. Montez. Honorable Manuel M. Lipardo Jr. Honorable Anna Charelle N. Castro. Honorable Elijah E. Palmahill. Honorable Daoud Villen Sag is on a special privilege leave. Honorable Stephen Paul L. Uy. Honorable Maria Lady Hope J. Makaira. Honorable John Erwin G. Montoho. Honorable Ruchy M. Ravelo. Honorable Jerome C. Dayang Hirang. Honorable Joseph Michael G. Dayang Hirang. Honorable Elliotarius C. Manaitai is on an official business in Davao City, attending the Regional IP Group and Muslim Leaders Forum on Nutrition and Food Security. Honorable Shannon Celine Tugunan is on an official business in Buston, Barangay Poblacion, attending the regular session of the Sangguli Ang Kabataan. Honorable Presiding Officer, there are nine members of this august chamber present, including the honorable Chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Considering that we have a number of nine, therefore we have a quorum for today's session. Before we continue, the honorable Vice Governor Glenn Rabat Gaeta has designated this representation as our temporary caretaker until her return or until she is through being our officer in charge to the office of the provincial governor. And so, what is the next agenda, Madam Secretary?
Next item in the order of business is reading and consideration of the Journal of Proceedings of the Eighteenth Sangguli Ang Panlalawigan of Davao Oriental, taken during the Sixteenth Regular Session, held on October 15, 2025 at the SP Session Hall Government Center Dahikan, and First Special Session, held on October 13, 2025 at the Sangguli Ang Panlongsood Session Hall, City Hall Compound, both at the Tiobmati, Davao Ori-
Before we recognize the honorable Makaira, are all the members already furnished a copy of the minutes of this regular as well as the First Special Session, Madam Secretary?
Yes, Your Honor.
The honorable Makaira is recognized for the disposal of these two sessions?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, to my colleagues, to the officers, and to the staff of the Sangguli Ang Panlalawigan, to the guests, everyone here. Good afternoon. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the adoption of the minutes and the Journal of Proceedings of the Eighteenth Sangguli Ang Panlalawigan of the Sixteenth Regular Session conducted last October 15, 2025 at the SP Session Hall here in Dahikan, Mati City, and of the First Special Session conducted last October 13, 2025 at the Sangguli Ang Panlongsood Session Hall of the City Hall Compound of Mati City, Eduso Mo.
There is an omnibus motion for the adoption of the minutes of our Sixteenth Regular Session last October 15, 2025, and the minutes of the First Special Session dated October 13, 2025, together with the Journal of both sessions. Anyone who would like to introduce any correction to the said minutes? There is none? Anybody who would like to second the motion of the honorable? Seconded by all present, the same is hereby adopted. What is the next item for today's calendar, Madam Secretary?
Next item is Privilege R.
For the Privilege R, I saw the honorable Dayanan raise her hand. Yes, you are hereby recognized for your Privilege R.
Thank you, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all of us, to my fellow legislators, to our guests, and of course, our friends in the media, and everyone present, ladies and gentlemen. I am standing before you today to emphasize and stress the importance of integrating a porridge, or what we call Lugaw, into our emergency response operation. Because, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer, during times of disaster such as ours these days, when our constituents face hunger, displacement, and uncertainty, a simple bowl of porridge, or yang mainit na yahong ng Lugaw, can provide comfort, sustenance, and warmth. It is inexpensive, nutritious, and easy to prepare even in the most limited conditions. Kung may nung dumana'to nitong paglinog kanato ng temprano, kita horot, yagadagan-dagan paglugwa, yagahangus, inerbyos, yagatinawagay, yagainiyakay, yagatjahu, onyagsangkeig, yang mga kanato kalumunan na yagkawadang. Ikita, isab na'to yang tim na'to sang emergency response na yagdali-dali magkamang ng mga emergency kits units. Ingusto agaw isab na'to makita na ang kanato mga trained is a part ng emergency response na magakamang gaw isab ng kaldiro ng bugas kay para maglugaw. Kitama gog mga Pilipino kung makakita kita ng amusaan, labinaya ang mga iso. Na matagaan gaw kita ng mainit na Lugaw na makahupay ng kanato pagbati, makakalma ng kanato inerbyos. Labinaya ang mga iso, hast na mga tiguwang. Amoyaan yang yarealize na'to, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer. Kung tanaw na'to, madali ay lamang ini, pinakamadali himo unato. Agaw sa therefore, I propose an urge that our local disaster response plans would include the preparations and distribution of the warm bowl of porridge of Lugaw, or Lugaw ngat to sang kanato mga evacuation centers as part of our relief efforts. Ngini agaw, dutayay lamang ini. This is just a very small but very meaningful action that can greatly improve and help the well-being of our evacuees, most especially our children and our elderly, the most vulnerable among us. Let this initiative remind us that even in the simplest way, we can extend our compassion and strengthen our commitment to serve our people, especially in these most trying times. So does, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Alright, that is the privilege of the honorable Dayanan. One, would you like that this item, or this privilege of yours, honorable Dayanan, be disposed of under the assigned business?
Yes.
Alright, and so that we will be a little bit faster, any interpolation, we'll just do it at the time when we dispose the same during the unassigned business, is that okay with you?
Yes, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer.
Thank you, honorable Dayanan. The honorable Tata Nunez Castro is also recognized for her privileged speech.
Good afternoon to everyone. I just would like to support and I submit to the privileged message of Board Member Dayanan. Really, it's also a big help to have Lugaw in our ICP, no? And our volunteers for the victims of our earthquake last October 10. That's all, Mr. Presiding.
Alright, thank you, honorable Tata Nunez Castro, for your support on that privileged message of the honorable Dayanan. Are there any members who would like to avail of the privilege R? There being none, what is the next item, Madam Secretary?
Next is Question R. Under Question R, we have here with us now, Mr. Roy J. Ponce, SUC President III, Davao Oriental State University. He is here to present statistical analysis on the review of the data from the Philippine Statistics Authority in relation to the poverty incidence report of the province of Davao Oriental. Unfortunately, honorable Presiding Officer, we could not have in today's session, Ms. Emily Pito Mugdan, Chief Statistical Specialist of the Philippine Statistics Authority, due to her, to their busy schedule considering that October is a national statistics month. This is spare info from the PSA Honorable Chair.
Alright, thank you, Madam Secretary. For us to recognize the good Dr. Roy Ponce, may I ask the honorable Attorney Maria Lady Hope J. Makaira that we, for the meantime, suspend the rules so that we can recognize the honorable Ponce, Sir Ponce?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I move for the suspension of our house rules to accommodate our invited guests, our Dr. Roy Ponce.
There is a motion for the suspension of the house rule, seconded by all present, same is hereby carried. Sir Ponce, Sir Dr. Ponce, good afternoon, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, to this honorable body. I would like to thank the invitation to present to you. Actually, this is like a lecture, no, on economics. Because, the governor actually commissioned me to look into the poverty situation of the province. Sa Davao Region, kita ang pinakapubre, and I think international naigo pagit-tao earthquake, no? Supposedly, I'm gonna present una ang PSA, and I will present the analysis. But right now, okay, wala man ang PSA, anyway, naman ang data nga ako ang ipakita, no? Allow me first to lay down my credentials in this lecture, no? I am taking the hat of an academic. Dili ko presidente ron sa dorso, kung dili, mo lecture ko as a statistician. I finished my Bachelor of Science in Statistics from MSU IIT, and my graduate diploma in Econometrics from the University of Southeastern Philippines, and also Assessment and Evaluation Masters from University of Melbourne in Australia, and Doctor of Education in Social Program Evaluation, also at the University of Melbourne in Australia. I would like to present to you a concept, maybe you are familiar with this. Kaning economic status na'to sa Davao Oriental na maklasify na'to based on evidence is called a premature tertiaryization, or premature tertiary na structure, no? This is based on the report of the provincial product accounts for 2024. I sent Board Member Ruchy Ravelo a copy of the presentation. Maybe he could also share the slides to you via his messenger, no? Next slide, please. I don't know kung makita ninyo, muklaro ba ninyo? Pwede po na ma-inlarge, no? Okay. Ang mga economist nga si Clark and Fisher, kumutan ako sila economic structure, they are dividing it into three categories, no? Agriculture, forestry, and fishery, isa ka grupo. Industry, isa ka grupo, and then services. For Davao Oriental, ang ato ang agriculture, forestry, and fishing up production ni account of 21%, no? Ang industry, meaning ka na mga manufacturing, pabrika, including mining, naa sa 15.2%. Ang services, kaning services, appeal na diri ang tanan nga mga professionals, tanan nga mga negusyo, tanan nga mga wholesale and retail tourism, ni account siya of 63.8%. So kung tanawin mo ang makeup sa tuang ekonomiya, ang agriculture, forestry, and fishing, 21%. Ang ato ang industry, 15.2%. Ang ato ang services, 63.8%. Dako kayo taog services? 21 ang ato ang agriculture, forestry, and fishery, ang atong industry naa lang sa 15%. Ang atong ekonomiya sa Davao Oriental, mikabat og 60 billion. Ang ato ang revenue sa Oriental in 2024, 60.3 billion. Unya ang growth rate ato karoon at sa 2024 tuig is 4%, no? Kung itandi na'to ni sa Davao Region, di na na ako i-present pero kita ang kinaiwitan. Slowest growth and smallest economy, no? Ganey na lagpasan ata sa Davao del Sur, no, sa Davao del Sur. Kaning nastructure, gitawag ni premature tertiary. Atan ako sa na'to, next slide. Tanaw na'to ang distribution ano, sa atong income. Ang top three na sectors, trade, negusyo, mining, and education. Sila ang nihatag og dako kayong growth sa atong economy, nga ni-contribute og 2.5 billion. Sa tuang 60 billion, na tubo sa 60 billion, no? Karoon dun na'tay problem ini. So, kinahanglan na'to, tanawon, kung unsagod ang contribution aning atong mining industry. Ang atong agriculture ni negative, ang tubo, negative 3.2. Na lugi ang probinsya sa tuig 2004 og almost 405 million, almost half billion. Ang infrastructure construction, ni increase og 241 million, og ang human development sectors, education, health, nihatag og 615 million. So dunan ni siya i-contribute nga total of 3.17 billion na dagdag, no? Sa ato ang increase, sa ato ang GDP na 60.34 billion. Okay, next slide. Unsaning gitawag na premature tertiaryization, okay? Maonis siya ang sitwasyon kung ang ekonomiya ni luxo, no? Kung tanawin mo ang normal na development sa mga advanced countries, magsugod na siya sa agriculture. Tapos, musunod iha ang industry, no, musunod ang industriya. Ka na mga manufacturing, processing plants. Dayon, musunod na kung naanay technological transformation, musunod na ang services, no? Tourism, professional services. So, ang ihang flow, agriculture, industry, services. Ang nahita po sa Davao Oriental, ni luxo siya. Gikan sa agriculture, ni dutso siya to services. Wala siya naka-establish og industrial maturity. Maonis siya i-gitawag og premature tertiary. So kung tanawin mo ang structure sa atong ekonomiya, murag, murag kay dako ang services. Pero in reality, pubrita kay wala tay industrial base. Next slide, please. So atong i-examine ang mga ebedensya ani based on data on five aspects, no? Five evidences based ni Rodrick. Ipresentin' na'to ni diri sa Sangguniyan tungod kay maonimuhatag sa tuag palisiya og insight, unsaon na'to pagtubag ang kopubrihon sa Davao Oriental. Kaning na-context mo explain, nga nong nagpabilinta in the last 10 years among the poorest provinces of the country, no? So tanaw na'to ang iyang structural evidence, tanaw na'to iyang productivity, ang labor unemployment, poverty and inequality, and institutional and policy evidence. Next slide. So kung tanawin ninyo in the past four to five years, why kausaba ng structure sa atong ekonomiya, no? The same, ang agriculture naa lang magdagandagan sa 20%. Ang atong industry naa sa 15%. Ang atong services naadiha sa 60%. So in the past five years, premature tertiary gyod ang sitwasyon sa Davao Oriental. Ang pasabotan eh, daghan kayo ta service ang atong income, gikan sa negusyo, trade, tourism, pero wala siya nakahatag og dakong impact in terms of easing the poverty sa probinsya. Next slide. So gitawag ni siya service-dominated economy, transitioning or emerging province, no? Unya ka ng 20% na agriculture, ang pasabotan na, okay kayo atong natural resources, pero dili siya dominante, no? Naatay, naatay resources, dato ang Oriental in terms of resources, pero pubre ang tao. Ka na ang ihang implikasyon. In terms of natural resources, forestry, kataba sa Yuta, dato ang Oriental, pero dili siya ma-translate into GDP per capita. Ang atong industry nga 15.2% baba siya sa national average, which is 33%, no? Katungat lang. Ang pasabotan eh, ang itsura gyod sa Davao Oriental, wala gyod tay industriya nga naestablish diri. Walay manufacturing nga nilahutay, no? So if you can see, all of the industrial plants, manufacturing, gisuyop sa tagom, ug sa Davao, no? Panabo, tagom, Davao, naadidto tanan. Walay natukod sa Davao Oriental, no? Ang ato ang interko, murag, nagkahinay. Ang menzing naa onta'toy fruit processing, sa inay tabadto, nawala, no? Ang, uh, unsa pa to, dagdag industry nga naestablish, Baganga, diba natoy industry sa Playwood ya? Nawala pod. So kung tanawanin mo ang history sa Davao Oriental, ang tanan nga naestablish from sixty to nineteen eighty, nawala from nineteen ninety after around, no? So ang nahita po, nawala siya, pero ang nahita po pod, ang productivity sa agriculture ni baba, no? So, ngano maning sixty-three point eight? Uh, natawag ni siya urbanization, trade, public services, daghanasag professionals, pero dakudakupog impact ani ang atong tourism og mga negosyo, no? Uh, kung dagdag negosyo, nganong walay trabaho, nae-trabaho, nae-employment, pero gamay og sweldo, kay dili industriya. Okay. Kusog makatag tourism, nganong dili man siya mo translate to productivity. Tungod kay ang tourism, although daghan tag tourism, pero ang trabaho sa tao sa tourism, low-paying jobs, serbidora, tricycle driver. So, job order. Unaanat lang bitaw ang level, so dili siya industrial og manufacturing nga muhatag og daku nga income base, no? Next slide. Ambot og okay ba sa inyo naing graph, mga graph sa mathematics? Kanang green, muna siya ang agriculture. Kung magka-improve ang ekonomiya, mo gamay gyod ang contribution sa agriculture, no? In terms of productivity share, monang green nga, uh, kung mag-improve ang ekonomiya, mo babagi ng green, okay? Kanang di kay maklaro na yellow, muna siya ang industry. Musaka siya, unya mo baba. Ya, kanang saobos nga blue nga pasaka, muna siya ang services. So kung tanawanin niyo, uh, maayog gyod unta og picture nga mutaas ang atong services. Pero ang nahita po sa Oriental, dagdag services, pero low-paying services. Tungod kay wala tay manufacturing og industry. Next slide. Maunang sitwasyon sa Oriental, uh, dili kayo maklaro diana, taas kayo atong services, pero halo ang iyahang industry kay mas taas pang atong agriculture sa industry. So muna siyang structural evidence, uh, uh, premature tertiary gyod ang Davao Oriental. Next slide. Amo niyang share, no? Kung tanawanin niyo ang share. Uh, mas dakuggyod ang services kaysa sa industrial og agriculture, halos lang nagparepareha, pero that's sixty percent. Next slide. Unsa man ang mga structural insights ani? So kung sa agriculture, ang nagpasabot ani, San Oriental has a natural endowment, no? However, growth may be constrained by low productivity and value addition. So, need nga isstrenten ang ato ang, uh, agriculture productivity. Pero ang problema ani kay ang atong agriculture, uh, sa atong latest is ni decline by three point two percent. Ang industry, uh, dakutag potential, sa industrial development, pero, uh, wala pa tay, uh, gusto mo to kudri. Isa siguro ka problema ana, maglisod sila sulod sa Oriental, una-una, uh, kurinte. Walay industriya nga musulod kung walay power. Makita niyo unya, kung unsa ang contribution sa power, no? I-present na nato. In terms of services, uh, taas tag service sa wholesale, retail, og tourism, pero dili siya mo translate sa dagkong nga income tungod kay low-paying jobs ang maabsorb sa population. Unya ang atong tourism, concentrated lang pod sa urban centers. Sumining sa mga dagkong nga lungsod, Langati City, Baganga, Lupun. Walay labot ang mga barrio og ang mga barangay. So sa ato pa, ang atong mga barangays are actually truly marginalized in terms of economic productivity. Next slide. So this is the classification. Kung sa agriculture, primary, ang, ang ato ang category semi-agricultural, dili ta full agricultural, no? Kay ni-decline atong production, unya dili gyod fully agriculture base. Kung namanggaling, lubiggyod ang kinadaghanan. Industry, ang ato ang status pre-industrial. Kung alam mo silang pre-industrial, naatas sa mga nineteen-twenty. Ang ato ang category as a province, no? Kung in terms of industry, kung sa history pa, karaan paggyod kayo ang Davao Oriental. In terms of services, tertiary transition ta, no? Okay ang services, pero katulaggy kay gagmay ang sweldo. At least maklaro nato na. Okay, next slide. Comparative lens ta. Sa Philippines, uh, pobre man po ng Philippines, no? Ang agriculture karoon sa Philippines na ten percent, ang industry na sa thirty-one percent, ang services naa sa sixty percent, okay? Sa Davao Oriental, uh, higher ta sa national, in terms of agriculture, lower ta sa industry, unya sa services, higher giapunta. So, ang remarks ani, service-driven but not yet industrially anchored. Okay, next slide. Agihimot lang ko gamay nga, uh, diagnosis in terms of, so in terms of strength, ni tubo manggiapon ato ang ekonomiya by four percent. Strong pang ato ang natural resources, expanding ang connectivity sa tourism, no? Based on our beautiful Davao Oriental. Ang weaknesses nato, wala tay industriya, wala tay manufacturing backbone. Uh, possible dependence on government and informal service employment. So kasagaran sa atong employment, naa sa gobyerno, job ord- tanan sa mga LGO, province, no? So kung naatay workforce aside from retail and wholesale, naa sa gobyerno ang atong workforce, puro job order. So nagsalig diana. So low value addition pod sa agricultural products. In terms of opportunity, uh, maka-improve ba ta sa agro-industrial, room for growth nato. Uh, green industries pwede establish, pwede po di establish ang digital economy. Kaning mga, uh, BPO unta ba? Gi, tistingan naman na ni, ni, ni Almario Amelisa Is- Isever, supposedly BPO na siya, industry, pero wala nakatake-off. Why? For one, dili stable ang kurianti. Number two, dili pa ma ang ato ang telecommunications activity. Ang mga requirement. I know, I know digital nomads nga gusto sila mupuyo sa, kung sila diri mga BPO. Pero ang nahita po, nanguli sila Davao, kay brown, dili nga. Ma-explain sa ilang client abroad nga nag-brown out, nasilay session, karong, karong urasa. Ya, di sila ka-online, unya ilang irason nga brown out. So ang mga BPO nga gusto unta mustabeish Oriental, nanguli og siyudad. Supposedly, isa na nga mo drive unta sa high-paying jobs. Uh, threats, kanak, climate risk.
Doc Ponce, I'm really sorry to cut you a little bit. Uh, as you can see, ang atong power medyo gafnak.
Yes.
The tech booth is requesting for a little, uh, short break lang gyod para maka-change power ta.
Okay, sige, sige.
So reggy kayo doc ha. Uh, Risa's for one minute. Ponce, uh, please do continue sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Power day to. Dili og pa libak, no? Okay. Di, nindot ni unya sa forum because we'll really try to see, unsa gyod ang requirements, kung gusto na tu sulbaro ng poverty sa Davao Oriental, no? Kay naghatag man ni siya og context para sa, para sa atua. So structurally wise, uh, klaro kayo nga nong bisag ni tubo atong ekonomiya, nga nong dili siya mo translate into good income. It's because nag-decline ang agriculture, lak taog industrial and manufacturing base, ni-dako ang ato ang services, pero low-paying jobs ang available and concentrated on urban areas, no? Kay kunawon tatoy industry, unya na-distribute sa mga, mga lagyong barangay, okay lang. Next slide please. Kani ang sixteen subsectors, uh, kanang taas kay diha growth rate, muna siya ang mining and quarrying. One hundred eighty-three percent ang eggy contribute sa growth sa mining and quarry, no? Pero ato po na siyang image kung unsa kadako iyahang share. Uh, di niyo mabasa, ang nagsunod ana, education. So imagine, ang contribution sa growth sa Davao Oriental is education. Meaning, uh, productivity through education, revenue through education. And I could claim that that is dorsal. Kay wala man tay private sector education sa Davao Oriental. In the whole province, we have only nine private nga gagmay paggyod kayo nga school, no? Davao Oriental with its, Davao Oriental State University with its seventeen thousand students, significantly contributed to the growth rate of the economy of the province. So after mining and quarrying, uh, education ang nagsunod. Nagsunod ang health and social work. Next is financial and insurance activities, mga bangko, mga, mga lending. Next is professional and business services. Sunod ang water and waste management, wholesale and retail, uh, information and communication, transportation and storage, accommodation and food service, construction, real estate and dwelling. Ang pinakaubos diha, tulo, manufacturing, administration and defense, uh, agriculture, forestry and fishing. Kanang pinakiwit diana, muna siya ang agriculture and fishing. Pero in terms of economy share, dakuman og share ang agriculture, ako na siyang gihimuan og multiplier index. So gimultiyplay na ako ning growth rate with the economy size. Next slide please. So maunang iyahang true ranking. Kanang nag-negative sa taas, agriculture na siya. Ang pinakadako nga ekonomiya og growth diha saobos is agriculture, uh, pinakaubos is wholesale, retail and trade. Okay. Maugina ang nihatag og ekonomiya sa Oriental, wholesale, retail, trade. Pero ang trabahan ti diana, uh, mga kuwan lang, sana, uh, ang mga trabahan ti diana, low-paying jobs lang, no? Kay tindira, bacher, labor. Muna nga bisag daghan kayo siya, uh, gamay ra siya contribution to revenue. Ang sunod ana is mining and quarrying. Unya, diba na tay latest issue sa mining? Kung ato ng tanggalon ang mining sa Oriental, mo suffer ang atong ekonomiya. That's a, that's a fact, no? So ato po na siyang balansihon. Pero wala ko'y detail from PSA. Pilaggyod ang contribution sa mining nga mining og mining nga quarry, no? Tungod sa construction, kainamay quarry na po'y mining. Giipon lang magunis siya, pero kanas siyang dakug contribution. Ang third is education. Ya, financial and insurance, mga lending, pala utang gyod, no? Mga, mga, mga lending and financial institutions, social work, construction, significant pod, transportation and storage, and rest, gagmay na kayo. Kung gusto niyo tanawan ang electricity and water, gamay na kayo sa taas. So ang but pasabot ani, uh, energy poor ta, no? Davao Oriental is energy poor. Okay. Next slide please. Productivity evidence. Uh, bisan dakusag contribution, ang high-growth sector is mining and quarry and finance, but our agriculture is negative. So gitawag ni siya og sectoral dualism. High-value sector, low ang absorption sa employment, low-value services, high ang iyahang labor absorption. So nabaliktad ang structure nun, nadual siya. Katung dagko og value, gam- ang, eh, katung, katung daghan nga magkatrabaho, gamay lang iyahang value. So monang iyahang, uh, productivity evidence. Next slide please. Labor and employment evidence. So we have a jobless growth and informalization, no? So daghan ang atong low productivity services because gikaon siya sa wholesale and retail. Next, evidence, next slide. Poverty and inequality. Ang atong growth rate na four percent, uh, ang iyang contribution ana pagalibyo sa kapubrihon is only, uh, wala kabot one percent, point twenty-five percent, no? So gamay kayo ang, ang decline sa ato ang poverty base ato ang four percent nga increase. Next is institutional and policy evidence. Next slide. Mauning mga hinungdan, no? Low energy and infrastructure capacity. Uh, education and skills mismatch, mauning sige namag-discuss ni board dayanan, nga sa, sa sitwasyon sa Davao Oriental, uh, ang ato ang education system gusto mahimo tanan nga, uh, white-collar professionals, tanan naa sa university, pero pag-graduate, walay tugpahan nga trabaho. Wala gyod tay tech voc, no? Gamay kayo ang tech voc nga unta mo feed sa industry. Uh, kung naputay tech voc, wala pa putay industry, no? So ang nahita po sa ato ang education, nag-produce tag professionals nga university level, pero pag-graduate nila, muhawa sila sa Oriental, kay white trabaho. Muato sila sa Davao, muato sila sa abroad. So ang ilang contribution, gamay kayo sa economic development sa Oriental. Kung namanggaling magpabilin nga magtrabaho, katung magkatrabaho sa gobyerno, katung magkatrabaho sa Dep Ed, no? Mga, mga teachers. So we are producing professionals that are not contributing back to the province. Tech voc gyod unta to, kung naa'y industriya sa Oriental. So kung tanawanin mo, distrikuan walay testa schools. Siguro mayhap lang, duhat tulo, no? Pero in terms of testa school sa distrikuan, wala. Distrikto naa, pero limited po kayo ang slots. Unta to, ang ubang isudyante pwidi ipa-tech voc, pero ang mga slots niya naa lang tag twenty-five kabok ang scholarship. Tanan natapok sa university. Tanan natapok sa university, no? Ang atong university students karoon 17,000. Every year, mo paggraduate taog 3,000. Asama na tugpa ng 3,000, unemployment, kundili makasulod sa gobyerno. Kay take note, bulk of our services are absorbed by wholesale and retail if not sa government siya magpadulong. Pero pagabot sa government, job order lang ihapon, no? Ang ilang mga trabahuan. Investment bias. Ang atong investment, ni-prioritize sa tourism rather than agro-industrial linkages. So okay man ang tourism nga daghan, pero low paying income gapon siya, jobs, ang tourism, no? Other causes. Dinyo na mabasa, next slide. Other causes, aning atong premature tertiary session. Ah, geographical isolation. Davao Oriental is not connected to the main economic artery nga highway. Ang main economic artery sa Mindanao is from Cagayan di Oro to Butuhan, to Agusan, diretso sa Nabunturan, Tagom, Tagom, Deyon Panabo, Deyon, Davao, Digos, Jensen. Wag yod nihapi sa Oriental. Unya, naabay niconnect sa main highway? Naa, pero duha lang, end to end, katiilang, niconnected to sa main artery and Banay Banay. In short, Davao Oriental is truly ageda. Kung imong tanahon, we are geographically isolated. Diliwag kay difference, no? Geographically isolated. Next, weak industrial base, ato na ngisgutan. Wala yod tay manufacturing o processing dery. Next is agriculture decline. Nganong nagdecline ang atong agriculture? Walay market o logistics. Kanagid ang problema, no? Okay, ah, kunala unta tay planta sa oil processing sa Lubie, daku na nag-effect kay puro man kalubihan ang Oriental. Daghan siyang trickle effect. When I discuss this, layo daw tag chance nga maka planta sa Oriental. Kay gi-absorb na sa Santa Cruz, Ug sadigos, sa Baker nilang Pangilinan. Ang ilan na lang ng buhaton sa Oriental, magbutang na do sila buying station. Dili, guna mo in-impact sa atong economy, bisag na sila buying station. Ngano man, ditura maginasa mahulog sa wholesale o retail. So in terms of job generation, labor lang yod siya, no? Unta'to, mutukod yod o, industry base sa Oriental. Agro-industry yod unta ang itukod. Another thing sa agriculture decline is, ah, productivity, nagbaba, no? Ang atong rice nagbaba. Banay banay, for example, wala na'y commercial rice. Gamay na lang na nag, nagtanong o rice para ibaligya. Kay ang mga rice diha na diretso na o Taiwan, o China. Kay seed rice naman siya. Girintahan na lang ang mga basakan sa, for policy via niya, kunyong tanahon, ang mga basakan sa Banay Banay, girintahan o mga international companies para mo tanong sila seeds. Pero kananga seeds, dili na dery sa to, kay di man na tumakao. Baligyan na nila dito ihapon sa Taiwan, sa China. 50% na sa Banay Banay seed rice and rented ang kayutaan, no? Lubin na la atong pag-asa, tourism. Ah, service-led urban concentration. Kunamanggani mga tourism activities o business na concentrate po siya sa mga lungsod. No wonder nga atong mga barangay nga sa periphery maglisod, no? And then historical and structural factors. Ang mga, ang centralization sa Davao City nipatay sa mga industri na to historically. Kay naamantay industri ang Oriental, pero nangawala. So I can name some, nga mga naabdan pa na ako, MNC, naabdan pa na ako when I arrive in Mati, pero nabungkag. Interco, I think, is declining. Ah, ang, ang Baganggang plywood, naabdan pa to na ko, nawala na siya, no? Ah, DatiCorp, nawala na, pero wala namang po tay, ah, Timber. Ah, unsay pag-asa sa Oriental, mining kay puro ta minerals. Pero we have to strike balance with environmental integrity. Ya, kung magpaminapod siya, kabkabon lang ibaligya sa China. Wala ihapon na economic impact, murarakal nag-wholesale o, kinanglan kung mag-mining, na dapat ang processing sa lungsod. So kanang mining, ah, minahon lang siya kay ibaligya sa China. Wala ihapon na ikanang, na binakong National o MGB. Davao di Oro has a big mining income kay nag, kuwan man sila, minahan ang bayan. Daghan man sila small-scale miners, tanan nila income padulong sa ilang probinsya. Mga more than 500 small-scale miners, pero madaut po ang kinaiyahan. So mo-work lang ng mining. Kung maayaw pagka-zone, nga dili madaut ang kinaiyahan, o kung ang ihang processing naa sa ugaren. Pero kung mining gani nga, imina lang siya kay i-export, ah, paspasan yod na guba, kay export man. Pero kung mining nga i-process, dili sa dali mahurot. Kay i-process man, pero ang impact niya sa industry, dako kayo in terms of economy and income. Okay, next slide. Can you correct this, no? Ah, as Sanggunian members, this honorable body, unsang mga tutukan sa development nga supportahan ato sa paligiya? Number one, tutukin sa agro-industrial development. Any opportunity nga pwidi na to mabira para sa Davao Oriental agro-industrial development yod, kinanglan na agay dagko nga mo-process, mo-establish o planta dery, no? Planta sa abaka, tissue culture sa abaka, planta sa processing sa Lubie, processing sa guma, processing sa saging. I think modern is the processing plant of banana in San Isidro. Contributing now to, ah, layer four Isidro, no? Also in Lupun. So kanan, isa na siya sa agro-industrial. I think Mati, ah, kaning Lopez nga sagingan is contributing with good labor and processing, no? Next is factoring for regeneration. So mga, mga local building materials, eco-base, no? Number three, service sector upgrading. I-improve ang, ang, ang service sector improve na to with knowledge and digital economy and creative industries. So kung ma-revive na to ang kanang target for BPOs, no? Ah, mga digital nomads, kinanglan yod na to ang requirement sa kurinte o telecommunications. So maki-partner yod taog mga telecom, unya, mo-partner yod ta, o kanang, kanang source energy nga stable. Requirement yod na siya. Kung kanan, in the next 10 years, dili na madress, in the next 5 years, maura ihapunta. Kun makita ato niyong last 5 years nga data sa ato ang economic structure, lima to katuig nga ingunad turagod ihang structure. Meaning kung wala tay buhaton karoon, mura po na tong i-expect in the next 5 years, no? Next, ah, link with education, research and innovation. Ah, we are doing our best in dorso. Local value chain and integration, market link and logistics. I believe nga kung na ay mamalit sa barrio produkto kada semana, na imatod itong truck, mo-kumpra, mo-produce yod ang tao. Basta every week na imo-kumpra sa ilang manok, na imo-kumpra sa ilang mais, sa ilang saging. So kung na ay programa on marketing and logistics, I think that will begin local agriculture productivity. Ah, nagtanaw ko, unsay purposean ang atong farmer's mall? Display center lang ba na siya? Or himona siyang center for marketing and logistics? Na na ay team nga ibaligya sa gawa sa Davao Oriental ang ato mga pang-export, abaka, lubie, mahimo na siyang economic hub. Farmer's mall, dili lang na dapat displehanan o tabuanan. It should be a marketing and logistics hub. Unanaw, tayang functiono? Ah, human capital reskilling. Dili na to, siguro daghanon kayo ang mga na sa university. Daghanon siguro na to ang technical vocational for industry nga mo-create o negusyo. No? Mo-create o negusyo nga mga jobs. Gibuhat na mo sa dorso sa una, laderise. Katong laderise program ba nga, first 2 years na kay diploma, unya, na na kay NC. Gitanggal man po na sa CHED, ilamang yong gidigri. Kay mo-compete daw economy sa Tesda. Kay unta'to among agriculture, 4 years, kung 2 years, pwidi na ka-agricultural technician. Pero gitanggal man po sa CHED ang laderise kay mo-compete daw me sa Tesda. So ang naitabo, nagproduce ta tanan o mga degree graduates, pero walay tugpahan, no? Migrate pagod sila sa city, so meaning digad kabali ko contribute sa Oriental. And then lastly, kaning functional economic and investment team or office that would orchestrate, direct and monitor economic structural changes. So I don't know kung atong probinsya na ba strong economic team nga magsigig monitor ani. nga, nga, i-monitor yod nga dapat structural ang atong imbisan, no? Structural, nga mo-shift ta to agro-industry. Okay, this is my last slide. Policy implications and recommendations. Ah, dery magdwell ang ato ang mga SB, ah, Sanggunian Panlalawigan members. Strengthen the industrial base, develop, ah, strengthen the industrial base. Develop small to medium agro-industrial processing zones. Next, modernize agriculture, no? Introduce precision, regenerative and high-value crop. And with that, ah, include, ah, support, no, on marketing. Next is boost, boost the service sector quality. Professionalize tourism, engage in digital and creative services. Ah, adlan ako nag-branding na mo sa dorso. Pero kanan ang tutukan, no? Kung mahimo, maka-develop tag, dagamat tag professionals, kung maka-develop taog, ah, digital economy dery, I think potential na sa atong service sector, kay dako kay atong service sector. So maningkamot yod ta nga mang birata dery o telecom. Unya, sulbaro yod ang problema sa energy, kay foundational yod na siya. Next is integrate value chain, connect farmers, processors, traders and service providers. So market and logistics, no? Boni buhaton unta sa economic team o sa pag-grow, no? And then promote inclusive growth, ensure that service expansion translate to rural. Kay ang atong services na concentrate lang sa mga lungsod, wala siya sa mga barrio, no? So kaning mga policies and recommendations, mawagini siya ang mga requirements kung gusto na to masulbad ang poverty sa ato ang probinsya. So na tay context karoon, no? Ako ninggi presentar, ah, last slide na no, thank you. Kay first term ang guni karoon sa ato ang governor. Gusto na ko mahimo ni siyang baseline. Because after kongrasahan, nga mo-full term o 9 years. Unsaka ang Davao Oriental in 9 years, base aning understanding. Kay ang gusto na ko i-drive sa Sanggunian nga, on the same page ta, nga mauna atong kinanglan sa probinsya para mo lambo, no? Moni ang atong economic structure niya, kaming kuwan, kaning result sa statistics every year ni, every year or every 2 years ni. So permita maka-discuss. So ang pangutan na, unsay mga moves na to, nga tutukan ang problem sa energy, tutukan ang problem sa, ah, opening for investment for agro-industry. Unya, kaning mga dagko nga mga requirements. Kundili na to i-prepare ang kondisyon sa Oriental. Kun makita ato niyong data nga for the last 5 years, the same ang structure, the same rahi-hapon ang mahitabo in the next 5 years, no? So I pose this challenge to our, ah, honorable body of the Sanggunian Panlalawigan. Ah, I am now ready for questions and discussions and comments, thank you.
Thank you, ah, Doc Roy Ponce, for that very insightful and a lot of lesson that we can pick on. Um, alright, ah, the good doctor is, ah, ready to answer questions. Ah, Madam Secretary, are we already through with 1 hour of our question hour or not yet? So that we can make the necessary extension if there is a need. At any rate, ah, if there are no members who would be questioning it, then, ah, yeah. Ah, please do, ah, yeah, limit your question if possible, ah, to at least 1 or 2 so that the other members will also be able to ask questions from, ah, Doctor Ponce, is that okay?
Yes, yes.
Alright, we'll start with the honorable Beverly Dayanan.
Thank you, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon, Doc.
Good afternoon.
Historia na isang kita. Dili dangin ni dorso doon. Kundili, this is about our economy in the province of Davao Oriental as a basis or a reference point to our poverty incidence level, which stands at, ah, what percentage are we now?
28% poverty. Actually, there's a decline, no? From 34 in 2019, ah, nibaba siya to 28%, pero taas ihapon.
28%? Ah, Doc, on what year is that?
Ah, 2024.
Ah, well, reconcile, Doc, my data is 38.9%.
Ah, that's individual poverty. The 28% is household poverty.
Okay, thank you, Doc. Okay, so, undeniably, the biggest resources that we have for Davao Oriental is land. Ironically however, our agriculture rates the lowest, the weakest of all. If we want to be industrialized, we can never do so without us attaining a high level of sustainable supply of agricultural products.
Correct.
Doc?
That's correct.
And the biggest, most, ah, the biggest, ah, the most, ah, the biggest agricultural product that we have is coconut, right? I remember, we used to be the dominant, the leader in producing coconut, eh, Doc. And I don't know what level are we now, that if we are so, then we can invite an investor to do as simple as coconut oil, desiccated coconut. We can do, ah, virgin coconut oil and others and so forth. However, we're faced with the most challenging, ah, area in terms of power supply, that also we can never be industrialized without that. Same is true to our other agricultural products. Now the question is, since we cannot be industrialized without us attaining that level of sustainable supply. Now the question is, since we cannot be industrialized without us attaining that level of sustainable supply, how can we boost our agriculture, that the only source of us to be an industrial one? If we look at Bukidnon, Bukidnon is just started as an agricultural in Dodo with vast land, just as like Davao Oriental, barring the weather diversity. And Bukidnon is the number-five richest province in the country. And if we look at tourism, because naturally, Doc, tourism, we're endured so much. The natural state of our undeveloped tourism is even so nice, so beautiful. Now in tourism, that was made Cebu the number-one, the richest province in the country. So we're agricultural, just like, ah, our potential, just like Bukidnon, the number-five richest province. Our tourism, okay, the potential, we can be like Cebu, who's too dependent on tourism. And with that major industry, if we can develop ourselves, that's, that's why that's really the challenge to our leadership, to look into these two major industries or sector that we have. Again, we can never be industrialized without us looking at our maximum hour sustainable output in agriculture. The challenge then is how to boost our agriculture. Without us being industrialized, we can never pump in or pump-prime our institutional facilities. Industrialization give rise to jobs, job-generating sector. Without job, our income, household income can never be stable. However, we are faced also with our cost of living, so to pump-prime our tourism. Nobody would come, visit in Davao Oriental if our cost of, our cost of living is high. And this is another thing that we have to look into. What causes our cost of living so high? If we look around, almost all of what we need is coming from Davao City. The irony again is that we have lands, we're agricultural supposedly, and yet we're buying vegetables and others from Davao City. And in when it gets to us, how many times is being handed from one hand to the other with added cost? So it's really one thing that could really make us think and, and how we can do so to be able to really bring the development or the progress that we're looking at our province. And Doc, you're mentioning kanina also, our education. The sequence of which was, it supposedly is agriculture give rise to industry. Industry give rise to institutional facilities, such as hospitals, even housing and education. And education supports our industry via white collar or skills to support BPO or tourism and whatnot. Now people will say, where should we start, Doc?
As I already presented, I presented the, in my last slide, the recommendations, no? So for this honorable body, it should be first things first. Number one, connection with the main economic arteries, so meaning opening of roads.
Yes, Doc.
Kana, no? Kay in terms of roads, we are still geographically isolated. Number two, really put priority on the energy of Davao Oriental. Kay kanang energy, kung dili ginamaplastar, wa'gyo and industry nga matukod. And then for agricultural productivity and manufacturing, think of the already low-lying fruits for Davao Oriental. Tama'to siya, that's coconut, tourism. Pero ang tourism should be distributed all throughout the province, no? Kana siya, so facilities should be distributed. I think this is, this has been already started by former Governor Cora Malaniaon. Na all of the infrastructure, gi-distribute yun sa whole, ah, whole province of Davao Oriental, no? So telecommunications and then market and logistics for agricultural productivity, no? So kung naay market, naagun ay mo tanong o mobaligya. Dili sila mo tanong, kay kabalo sila nga, ang ilang, ang ilahang, ang ilahang presyo, baraton lang sa middleman, no? Ah, rice, pila ng kilo sa rice, fourteen pesos lang, no? I know, one baryo nga gi-dominay to kuwan, leader pagod ang mag-monopolize sa mais. Ang palit lang niya sa mais, diis pesos lang ang kilo. Pag-abot sa ubos, pila na, korinta na.
Yes.
Dayon kung ang farmer po ang mobaligya, mahal po kay ang pliti sa habal-habal. Tag one thousand po ang bihi, so wa'na siya ginansya. So marketing and logistics, so if the province can establish through its departments and its policies, kani'ng mga basic yun, nga unahon, carsada, marketing, logistics, energy, unya full support sa agriculture program on productivity.
Yes.
Kana yun ang first things first.
Yes, correct, Doc.
In the next three years, kung kana yun ibuhus tanan, Deana, ah, I think that will create a movement in our, in our structure, no? So, ah, I'll be giving copies, no? Gi-hatag na ko kay Board Roche Ravelo, ang policy implications and recommendations and katung, ah, pathways to correct premature tertiaryization ah, that could be tackled by the subcommittees dili, no? Ngakatung sa economy, sa agriculture, dagan man to'g iko, dagan man to'g iko, mabahin-bahin manis siya.
Yes.
No? And tech voc.
Yes.
Siguro, technical vocational on agriculture usa, no?
Yes, Doc, correct.
Ah, in your statement, dili hopeless ang province.
Of course.
Dakok kayo tag potential, meaning the province is lying on a very rich environment.
Very much.
Tanan, natural resources, fertile land, rich in minerals, and yet, wala lang yun nato naplastar ang structural prerequisites. Moro ba nagkursoba nga, kung dili nini mo mahimo ang prerequisite, di yu kakatabok, no? So naabtan lang tag services, pero alanganin nga services, ni-growta sa services, pero low-paying jobs.
Yes.
So ka na ang sulbaron dapat, no?
Sakto, Doc, sakto. And then, that's right. If we have a mandate to boost productivity of our agricultural, comes with it is the opening of the market. And if we can muscle the high level of production, we can never be controlled or manipulated by anyone. We can do, we can dictate, okay? So, um, it's a lot there. And I'd like also to comment, we may not be geographically blessed in that when we were not, ah, made part of this, ah, main artery, economic artery. However, being a Jida, being an isolated economy, I think we can develop with what we call a self-contained, self-sufficient economy. What do we mean by that is that? In Province Oriental, other than considering in terms of consumer, consumer had the level of consumption that we need, and secondary is those that we can sell, okay? We have to produce our own food. We should not be dependent with rice or anything, vegetable, buying from Davao City or any other places for that matter, which I feel we can really possibly do.
That, that's correct. I, I agree. Um, we, we, I think, ah, we have a study on that, no? Ah, sa Bangkiruhan mamalit, even people from Mati, Lupun, and Bagangga, sa Bangkiruhan magkumpra o tanan, products.
Yes.
Then from Bangkiruhan, gi-kana siya sa kapatagan, jensan, kidapawan, bagsak sa Bangkiruhan, dito magpalitan na, no? Unya middleman na. So marketing and logistics can begin looking at that. I think that's the idea nga gusto sa Lupun, that they wanted to be a, ah, ah, vegetable basket of Davao Oriental, so. Ah, oo, Don Camar area, ah, that's the discussion that we had, because they wanted durso to open, ah, horticulture, because they wanted Lupun to be the, ah, vegetable, ah, production of, ano, sa Don Camar for Davao Oriental. So kani'ng mga development direction ang nindot, then ano? Another thing is also is abaka, if we can support the abaka industry, no? So dagan pa tag prerequisites nga dapat i-prioritize, no?
Yes, Doc.
Thank you.
So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ah, Honorable Deanan. Are there any other members who would like to, ah, make some questions or shoot some to Dr. Ponce? Alright, I think, ah, ah, yeah, the Honorable Roche Ravelo is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all, ah, our honorable colleagues, ah, guests, of course, to our presenter or source person, Dr. Roy Ponce. Thank you for a very insightful presentation. Thus gives us a, a clear picture on how we're going to move forward with regards to these pressing concerns of us being number-one in the region as a, sad to say, poor province. Of all the records that we, we hate to be number-one is, to be number-one as to poverty, no? I hope that we will be number-one in the coming years as, ah, the most productive and developed province in the region. And I think there's nothing impossible to it, because we were given already, ah, documents where we can, ah, start on, no? So Doc, ah, that's a very good point that you raised to us. Those, ah, ideas where we can, ah, really somehow strategize the development works for the province, especially that, right, ah, you said, ah, it's the first term of the Governor, and we consider it also as our first term, because, ah, this is the best time for us to work together. Ah, we have our Governor, two congressmen, um, majority here are supportive of the directions of the Governor. In fact, I think all of us here in the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, ah, oh, ah, Board Member Deanan readily agreed. So, ah, there's no kanato ini on what, but we are one. There's no District One and District Two, but we are one province, right? So, ah, Doc, these are based on research, ah, we have hard facts. Ah, you've mentioned, ah, we need some structural changes. Ah, and, ah, by, by, you mean some big policy changes in the province? And we also need the support of the national government. And I mentioned earlier, we have two congressmen with us. So like, ah, one, the problem of power, ah, our utilities, not just, I think not just electricity, but even water supply. I think utilities is, ah, one, no? Ah, by saying, ah, pow, ah, utilities, we have electricity and water and plus digital infrastructure. So is, ah, am I right, Doc?
Ah, yes, so, ah, electricity, water, digital infrastructure, and waste management. Kana nga utilities, kung establish na siya, because waste management is very critical to our tourism, no?
Right.
So, kana nga mga utilities. Ah, that's correct. Isang pinakatutukan yun, kay kuwan yudha, kanang prerequisite yudha. And another thing nga, ni-kamasa kong mind karoon is, how far have we gone with the ease of doing business? Unsa ba kasayon, musulod dili ang negosyo o maglis kay number one, okay na ba atong zuing? Nasona ba ang industrial areas? Naabay mo-facilitate nga maka-plastar sila? O pag-negotiate pa lang sa Yuta, ni-back out na kay wala ni tabang pag-plastar, no? In terms of business processes, I know one, virgin coconut oil nga planted dili. I, I don't know kung naka-operate sila balik, pero nato'y time nga gi-pasirado sila, kay dagan daw sila gula'y compliance, pero wala'y enabling mechanism to help them. Unya, industry na'tong nagitukod. So basin, kana po ang kinahanglan i-review sa Sangguniyan. Kumusta ang ato ang ease of doing business? Dali ba makasulod ang mga negosyante sa Davao Oriental? So I think we need a team, no, to really look, look into that. So tama'to, basic utilities should be established. Ease of doing business should be reviewed and managed by an economic team. Dayon, road infrastructures should be established, no? Ah, I think ongoing na, i-prioritize na siya to link, and then marketing and logistics. I think with these foundations, kung money tutukan in the next three years, I think it will give a dent. Of course, katung mga, ang poverty, lahi po ng istoryahan. Kaya ang pobre, dagan po nag-levels. La-ilahi po to'g strategiana, no? So we will study that, maybe I can present again on tackling the, the sector. Pero for now, structural sa tanawan nato, kay mauna ni ang konteks good, nganong, nganong, ah...
We have to look into the macro side before we tackle the micro impact of these economic situations that we have, no?
Kay structural mangutya. Ah, yeah, nakita nato sa previous data, five years, stable kay atong structure. Premature tertiary, wa'gyo siya nausap. So kung wala tay buhaton at this point, it will be the same in the next five years, no?
So if I may add, ah, yeah, I agree with you that those mentioned earlier, especially utilities, the power, electricity, waste management, and as you have mentioned, the management of the economy, we have, we need to have an office like looking into the ease of doing business. Now, ah, I think just recently, I, I think two days ago, I received a message that the Smed Council is now being reorganized by the Governor, and, ah, he has, ah, pinpointed, ah, appointed a person to lead the investment and in, ah, office. And I think the revised revenue code is going to be done here. Ah, they're on the process on the executive department. And, ah, yeah, we are going to review the provincial physical framework and development plan. These are structural also part. Ah, with regards to the plan, ah, are you not also like, ah, can we also look into the land ownership in the province?
Yes.
Like, because, you know, I've, I've come across the book of Barry Asmos and Grudem. One is a lo, one is a pastor and the other one is an economist. They said that the reason why nations are poor, ah, because of the structure of their land. Mostly, they have not graduated to be owned by the hacienderos of one province. So if we, and I think I can relate it well in the province of Davao Oriental. No, I'm not saying that these people are bad, no, but, ah, they're blessed to have those lands, no? When, when Manuel Ilqueson, ah, other presidents are inviting people, telling them that Mindanao is the land of promise, giving more lands to the people coming from Visayas and Luzon and, ah, leaving the natives with smaller areas, and then they have now this big, ah, large tract of lands owned. A lot of investors are coming in here during the late Governor Cora Malaniaon, and even the term of Gov. Nelson, the first six years, a lot of investors are coming in. But one question is, we want an area, compact area of fifty hectares. We cannot give it to them, because mostly are still owned by the hacienderos of Davao Oriental. I think that, ah, I, I don't know if I am right, or, or the, the idea of the theory or the experience of Barry Asmos and Grudem is true to Davao Oriental. So I'm, ah, since you're doing good, ah, in, ah, researches, ah, you, you're, ah, telling us that our policies must, must be you're telling us that our policies must be research-based. So, thank you for giving us direction, enlightening us. Can we also look into that? If there's really a correlation between little or no investors coming in because of the land ownership structure in the province of Dava Oriental as compared to Dava de Oro and Dava del Norte? That you're telling us that mostly investors in manufacturing are limited to locate in Dava del Norte and Dava City because, I mean, those landowners there are free to, like, okay, we can sell this part of our land so you can start your own business.
I agree with you because that has been a problem, no? And conceptually, yeah, we need data. Pero tanawan ako dili na mga asyenda because successful man ang agrarian reform. But I think the opportunity that can be looked into this is the ancestral domain. So, half of Dava Oriental now, half of Dava Oriental, or more than half, I think 60% of Dava Oriental now is ancestral domain. So, meaning, it's really working closely with the indigenous peoples ang opportunity to build huge industries. For example, I know one kadde nga pila, 300,000 hectares. So, kunakay 300,000 hectares and then a company would just need use of frac of 100 hectares, that's easy. So, ease of doing business, pwede na siya mo interact with the IPR law, no? So, critical dari ang ato ang IP. Because ang potential sa industri nga dagko nga Yuta, pwede ginasi in negotiate sa ancestral domain. And then, once it's in the ancestral domain, daku kay sag-impact sa poverty kung mo translate siya to real income to our indigenous peoples, no? So, kanapod ang pwede tanawon. But yes, we can look to study on the correlation of land distribution to industrial development. Pero ang akong tanaw karoon, mas may pamudiretsyo sa ancestral domain. So, any big industries nga most established manufacturing, dito po na tanawon. So, kanapod, kanapoy, balita nga lisod kay mokwag FPIC.
Or basin, Doc, dili asyenda tungod nalistan tamo pangita uglaing area because we have more people to negotiate because of the agrarian reform.
Monang tarungon ang CLUP sa mga LGUs, no? Comprehensive Land Use Plan, ang mga FLUP. And then, I think daku kayog kalabutan dari ang mga ADPP sa ancestral domain. An ancestral domain with an ADPP, maka define man sila og industrial zone.
Yes.
So, kanang ang industrial zone nga 50 hectares, gamayra na kay sa ilaha, no? So, pwede po na siya tanaw na ngang aspect?
Okay, that is all, Doc. Thank you. We hope to discuss with you more but some other time and other venue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your presence.
Thank you, Honorable Ruchy Ravilo. The Honorable Harold Montez is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to our resource speaker, Dr. Ponce. Thank you for very enlightening presentation, no? Kita kaayo, claro, with all the aspect ang situation nato dinhi sa probinsya sa Dava Oriental. Sa entire Dava region, kita ang pinaka-lowest, no? And kini nga mga basihanan, maumani ang ato ang mga panlantaw, magkahiusa, pinaagi sa ato ang mga paghimuon. Dinhi sa moa sa legislative and of course, dito sa executive sa ato ang Honorable Governor. nga, sa hinay-hinay, maaliviet nato ang ato ang kapubrihon dinhi sa probinsya sa Dava Oriental. Ganit bisan tuod, makita nato sa presentation nga ang probinsya naapatas sa kumbaga 1920s as you've said ka ganina ang ato ang situation. And isa sa nakita nato nga kosana is ang kanigyong problematic nato sa ato ang power and other utilities. You know, pagmawadan lang og bisan og isa kauras na power ang entire province, that would really tantamount to a huge lugi. Kanatong tanan, ma-investor, ma-negosyante, ma-government. Tanan nga nagunit, nagamit og power dinhi sa atong probinsya. As we all know, kapila na nato, ipatawag dinhi ang ato ang Dava Oriental Electric Cooperative. And dugay-dugay napod sila nag-exist, 40 years na. And yet, medyo hinay gehapon ang ato ang development in terms sa power. Magkaroon manggud og dominong effect kung ang ato ang power medyo tabangunon, nagkalisod. Because sagi kengon ako ka ganina, when power dies, magfollow ang ato ang mga utilities, water and ang ato ang communication. Kay, some part ang oban, may na lang tong mga communication nato and other utilities, kena ay mga backup generators. Ang oban yud wala, nagrelye lang sa ato ang grid, ang supply sa Doreco. Um, kini, I'm sure ang Doreco nagapangita po na opumaagi to deliver a good service ato ang province. But medyo nakita gidnato nga hinay kaayo ang ilahapong, maybe because sa economic po nila nga medyo hinay po ang ilahang sulod sa part sa ilahang economy sa Doreco. Maunang di po kayo sila maka-deliver dahil sa mga panginhanglanon, especially on the investment sa infrastructure sa Doreco. Now, ang ako ang pangutana, Doc, o sa may nindot gidnating himuon iini kay kapila na magidnato sila ipatawag and morag ginapasa-pasa, usahay mo sumbong dito, i-appil napod ang National Grid, kanan sana?
NGCP.
NGCP, pasangel dito nga wala daw tong 139 TBA. Or, o sa mangyud, ang pinaka-the best aning paghimuon nga maki og venture na lang siya sa another stable na company. Kung unsa manggaling ang nagai-exist sa nagalain nga siyudad, nga tested na yud nga wagay palong-palong ang ilahang supply or timely napod nga for renewal ang ilahang franchise. So, as agyud, i-meet nato ang kanak nga between sa Doreco, sa other companies, sa probinsya, kung unsa yud ang ato ang himuon. Or it's either magpasulod na labag yud taglain para ma-address ni or unsa yud kay usahay nalibog ko nga wala pagi-immediate nga kuwan, sigilang tao patawag, sigilang consultation. Well, good, kay nabalan yud nato ang pinaka-root cause sa problem.
Isa, isa.
Isa.
Isa sa root cause.
Isa sa root cause. But, uh, wapag yud tanan.
Wapag yud tanan.
Wapag yud tanan. Kay, napoy mga reservations. So, siguro, uh, o sa ika-suggest ni Moana, Doc.
My take on that sa atong power, duharagay padulangan na. Uh, the first one is, first option, replace Doreco. Second option is transform Doreco. And both will need investment. I think ang problema karoon sa Doreco, wala'y kwarta to expect, to invest for modernization and expansion. Walay kwarta. So, ang kinahlangan na investment. So, ang matabangan na sa government sa Sanggunian is to find investor to assist Doreco. Ang option ana naana sa inyuha, kung totally i-replace or retain Doreco and transform. Kay, sa akong tanaw sa duha, investor ang kinahlang. Nag-exist ng Doreco karoon, ganong dili na maka-takeoff. Kay, tanawin ako, wala'y kwarta for investment to really address the requirements kay infrastructure manggapon siya. So, kumita nga, kung sulbaro nato ang problema sa Doreco, sa Dava Oriental, it's still an infrastructure problem. Kinahlang og kwarta. So, basi wala'y kwarta ang Doreco or wala na budgetan or dili siya maka-loan kay na ay mga palisiya sa Department of Energy. Unsa ba, basta kanalag yung duha ang padulhan. Either elisan siya or mo-upgrade siya, mo-transform siya in whatever form. Basta kinahlang yud siya og investment. Si investment gehapon ang kinahlang, no?
Correct. Thank you. Because, maulag ito, dominong effect kay because kung mapalong dito, butanta sa mga tourism site like Governor Henneroso, unya na ay mga turis, kasagaran feedback, dili na mo balik because
Yes.
dili komportable.
Daku kayog impact sa tourism. Even our visitor sa university, no? Even our production, even a vendor nga naglutoog, ganang lutuoog mga toknining, mga kakanin nga nangumpra sila, praibaligya. Walo kauras nga nagbrown out, lugi sila, pati ilang kapital, no? Daku yudog impact. So, kanang tutukan, nga kinahlang kuwan yud, kanang nanagay action.
Correct.
Nanagay action. Kinahlang ma-pressure yud nga aksyonan. Unya, tabangan nga mapangitag investor, no? Niya, dito na na siya sa buton kung i-totalally replace ba or i-transform. Transform siya. Ako, I want to transform Doreco kung ako. And additional investment, no? Kay, part mangyud po na sila sa Dava Oriental.
So, importante lang na open po sila. nga, morag medyo, dili na lang good kay nato i-hide na kaya pag yud whatsoever. Importanting, open lang kay ang government, kita ang province, andang permenti mo-assist mo tabang. And I'm sure napoy mga investor nga nagatanaw. And siguro, nanagay na mga studies siguro karoon, wala na takabalo. nga, pwede me din ha, pero kung ang kining institution di po kayo openly nga mo kuwan yud. So, diha ang ato ang morag medyo backlog may. Pero we hope na, uh, open lang po unta sila and kita. Kay, para sa kaiusahan, para sa development, para sa ikaayo sa ato ang pinalang.
So, first pangitawon, investor.
Yeah.
Unya, mamili na lang atong duha ka approach. Either totally replace or negotiate to transform.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Honorable Montez. Do we have other members who would like to ask? Alright, um, Doc, share lang po na ko three things, no, on Doreco. Um, of course, being an unstuck nonprofit, digid sila tugtan sa balaoon nga magkupot og substantial nga finance. Otherwise, if mosobra sila sa threshold, then they will be considered by the BAR as for stock and for profit. I think that's one of the things that will have to be looked into also sa imongi suggest nga kung pananglitag atong i-rehab si Doreco. I don't submit to the idea nga dili silang maka-rehab sa old lines nila because they do not have money. There are a lot of financing institutions that are readily available. Only that, the procedure is kinahlang ilang pa-aprobahan sa ERC. Energy Regulatory Commission.
ERC.
Ang infusion of a, of that investor nga ilang utangan. That is where they are very poor. Because even ang ilahang capital expenditure katong ginatawag nga CAPEX, as early as 2019 until now, dili pa-approved. Capit, we're talking here of CAPEX, capital expenditure. We're already in 2025. Pero ang ilahang 2019, 2020, 2020, until now, pa-ma-approved. And so, I think that is where the problem lies as far as the Doreco. But I think the disposal also of the Governor in one of the meetings with them and the NGCP is they will be given ample time. That would be until the end of December 2026. Beyond that, if we will still suffer or have this same service from them, then we'll either go for the termination of their legislative franchise by way of our congressman or we'll go with what Siki Hor did, where we, the Governor order declare a state of emergency, I think, and tapped onto the national government by way of the Office of the President.
Na, na kuwia, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Doc.
Dili na manggud nila, i-meet ang need. With this presentation and economic development, ilapong i-project ang development needs. So, kung dili manggaling ma-meet ang current needs, niya, mora na i-apason, di ka puntamogro. Kay, ang ato ang mga tanaw, ang projection. So, with all these presentations, atong structural nga problem, I hope ang masabdan sa kaninga body isang iyahang urgency. So, I laid down this baseline. I will write and publish a paper on this as baseline. And then, let's see in the next three years, mutaruba siya. Pero, energy is one of the structural problem of Dava Oriental, no? Pero dili lang siya ha, wala na tukipasanginla na. It is one of the many structural problems. Geographical isolation, lack of industry base, pero konektado man siya, tanan, no? So, uh, ang akwa lang is, I am presenting this with a plea sa tong mga membro nga unta, i-take ni siya as urgent. Kani nga mga butang, la binakatong mga recommendation, no? So, naagiusay timeline dapat nga kani mag-invite na tay investor ease of doing business nga policies.
Thank you, Doc.
Kanalang, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Doc. Uh, I think this will be best discussed with the Governor by way of an executive legislative forum between the two branches of provincial government.
Yes, and I can present again, no? If to shed light. And if only to really be an approach where it is holistic, pwede po ni i-present sa local Sanggunians, no? Sa down the municipalities and the city. Doc, second thing, you made mention of Menci. My personal take is the Agrarian Reform Act happened. That's why you have that Menci now. Uh, gibuak ang Yuta sa Menci because of that law. And the cooperative was not able to sustain the operations of that industry. And lastly, Doc, on, you made mention that we have two roads here, sections. You referred to them in District 1, where we are connected to, um, the main highway, the economic highway. Um, if I may add, in Mati, we also have the Maragusan. And the latest is in Boston, where there is already a road, highway connecting two via Mount Diwata, Barangay Diwalwal. Diretso na na siya padong pagawas og Munkayo, Municipality of Munkayo. We have two that is in the works now. Ang usangan ha, ang kaning mo-konekta sa Yubataan via Barangay Manurigao. Ang mo-konekana is ang Barangay Binondo of the Municipality of Bagangga. Where ang atong karsada karoon, dito na sa second to the last sitio. I think it's in Sitio Limot. The next to that is Sitio Mantapay. Mo-konekna na siya sa Manurigao. And from what I've heard from the DPWH, there is a bulk amount that is being included for next year's budget. And hopefully, ma-konekna na siya. I think the amount is really substantial. And the last, mo-konekpo sa tua, towards the Oro, because it's only the Oro where we can connect with that main highway, is kaning ginabuhat nga trabaho in Barangay Pantuyan, where I think we are already in Sitio Maglahos. Next to Sitio Maglahos will be Mawab, uh, Maragusan. So, in the coming years, if katong ginahistorahan lang nato katong karsada, mo-hinehene tog abre. And hopefully, we can invite also investors kung makita napod nila ni. And with the rolling of the airport also, basig maka-dugang po ni siya.
Yes, and historically, ang maritaim po nato nawala, no?
Yes, and historically, ang maritime po na to nawala, no? Ah, Bagangga-Cebu nga route and Sambuanga, Bagangga-Sambuanga. And I learned Mati, Mati-Sambuanga before. Historically, na atay mga maritime routes, nga kung ma-revive po na, then Bagangga can be a gateway to international ah, ports like Cebu, no? So kani nga mga structural development, moogid unta niyang pang, pangtanawon, no?
Yes.
Okay. So, Doc, ah, napabailaeng gusto mangutan na, wala na. Thank you very much for that presentation, Doc. And ah, we are still on question hour. What is the ah, suggestion of the members? Atong humanon usa si ah, Engineer Burgos kay appeal man siya kang, and then we can take a maybe two minutes recess so that we can have a, is that okay with you? Doc, can you, can we ask that you can stay around for around five minutes lang?
Yeah, sure.
Alright. Thank you very much, Doc.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Doc. Um, the, di inanimo? The Honorable ah, Harold Montes is ah, recognized ah, for the next ah, guest ah, under question hour?
Ah, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Ah, karongha po na akong ipaila-ila sa inyuha ang ato ang ah, bago nga provincial department head under the Provincial Assessor's Office. No other than Engineer Verhilio O. Burgos. Ang ato ang bagong, ah, provincial assessor sa probinsya sa Davao Oriental. Sir, you may take the floor and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Ah, good afternoon to each and everyone. I am Verhilio O. Campo Burgos. A civil engineer and a real estate appraiser by profession. Fifty-six years old. Um, I entered the local government unit of Manay when I was appointed by Honorable Nelson Eldiang Hirang as a tax mapper one under the Office of the Municipal Assessor. And March one, two thousand one, I was again promote, I was promoted as a municipal assessor of the Municipality of Manay again by ah, appointing officer, Honorable Nelson Eldiang Hirang. And now for the third time, I was again ah, appointed by the Honorable Governor for the position of the provincial assessor. I, I applied this position because I, I knew and I believe that I could be a big opportunity or big contribution to this office. Considering my technical expertise, my thirty-one years in real property appraisal and assessment. And I also consider this as a challenge and an opportunity for me to apply my talent to a higher or a wider and a broader ah, provincial level. Helping the office and ah, standardizing and modernizing the system. And strengthen my support and coordination with the municipal assessor. Ah, actually isa sa pinaka-dream na ko nga, when I, when I was appointed as a municipal assessor, ah, ang request nga hangtud nga nag-up, na appoint na lang ko as a provincial assessor nga, wala yun na nadawat or na, naabot sa mga municipal assessor ang mga, ang maong support. Ang support sa probinsya, provincial assessor mismo sa mga municipal assessor in terms of technical, which is ah, we all know that under ah, section four seven two B, the number twelve function of the provincial assessor and the technical supervision to the municipal assessor. Kaya this time, I, during my first day, when I assume on October one, I immediately made ah, conducted a meeting with the municipal assessor and emphasizing na ako yung i-implementar tong regular visitation sa ilaha kay, as far as na-experience na ko sa level sa mga municipyo. Ang naitabu nga system sa ah, pagconduct sa ah, function sa mga municipal assessor or the transaction itself. Halos mura nagkalahi-lahi, wala'y, dilipareha ang, ang treatment sa maong mga functions. Tungod kay lagi wala siya, wala'y nag, wala'y nagtanaw sa taas sa mga municipyo. In fact, mouna ang mga mulupod sa kuha sa mga municipal assessor o request. Kay gani, isa ang mga municipal assessor ang nag-endorse sa kuha nga mo, i-apply ang maong position. So this time, nag-promise ko sa ilaha, gani naghimon ako o ah, nag-hatag na ko sa ilaha o plans. Tanan nga, dapat para ma-improve or ma-uniform ang, ang transaction sa municipyo. And ang pinaka-importante nga ma-upgrade in terms ah, ah, computerization. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ah, Engineer Verhilio Boyat Burgos. Is there any member who would like to ask ah, some questions to Engineer Burgos? Wala? Ah, sige. Muuna na lang siguro ko, congratulate ni mo, sir. Ah, for the information of the August body, ah, ta't-ta't po big nag-uba ni Engineer Burgos sa municipyo sa Manay kay dati mapunamo siyang municipal engineer. Og saway pagpabor-pabor, ako po ni parinti dito sa Manay. So, it's a well-deserved ah, position for you, Engineer Burgos. I know that ah, the governor during ah, the last year of his second term was already looking at you to be the next assessor. Medyo na odlot lang to gamay kay ni dagan man siya congressman. But now that he is back ah, with you there, I know that you will also be an addition to the family of Governor Deyang Hirang para sa atong probinsya. Daghan kay nag-atang sa imuhha, appeal pa tong kang doktor po si kanina. Katong ingon niya nga, dun na na batay insaktong ah, ah, appraisal of ah, properties, no? Ah, sa ang atong industrial, bahan ay nisa. Ah, kay kana, adun namang po'y ah, connection atong atong gina sagubang karoon nga, we are the first ah, to the last. So, again, Engineer Burgos, congratulations sa imuhang appointment.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Um, apakpakan lang na to. Alright, ah, are there anything more? Under question hour, Madam Secretary?
Nothing more, yeah.
The Honorable ah, Attorney Makaira is recognized? On the lifting on the suspension of the rules?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Considering that there, there are no other guests here, um, I move that we lift the suspension of our house rules.
Alright. The same is hereby carried. Ah, before we continue with our session, may I ask for a two minutes recess? So that we can ah, have our photo taken with ah, Doc Ponse and ah, Engineer Burgos. Session resume. Before we continue with our session, I would like to recognize the presence of ah, the F A B C. Ah, the Honorable ah, Joson Michael G. Deyang Hirang, sir. May hapon. Pakpakan na to. Alright, ah, and before we continue with our calendar, may I recognize the Honorable Makaira for the necessary amendment of our calendar for items that are not included in the calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The Office of the Sanggunian Secretary has received two communications. Namely, communication number eighteen dash one five five dash twenty twenty-five. Um, from the Honorable Governor, requesting this August body for the passage of a resolution authorizing the undersign to enter into a memorandum of agreement for and behalf of the Province of Davao Oriental with the Department of Social Welfare and Development to facilitate the implementation of the assistance to individuals in crisis situation or the A I X program with a total funding allocation of twenty million pesos. Also, this is certified urgent in nature. The second communication is communication number eighteen dash one five six dash twenty twenty-five. Requesting this August body for the passage of a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor for and behalf of the Province of Davao Oriental to enter into a deed of absolute sale for the acquisition of a parcel of land intended for the development and use of the Mati Airport Terminal. This is also certified as urgent in nature. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that these two communication, that our calendar be amended to include these two communications in our order of business for the day.
There is a motion from the Honorable Makaira to include communications one five five and one five six in our calendar. And a second, seconded by the Honorable Montoho, Honorable Palma Hill Ravelo Montes, Deyang Hirang ah, or seconded by all present, the same is hereby approved. Madam Presiding Officer, can we now continue with our calendar for today's session?
Next is first reading and referral to committees of proposed ordinances and proposed resolutions, none. Communications, first under communication is communication number eighteen dash one four eight dash twenty twenty-five.
This communication eighteen dash one four eight? This ah, communication, ah, number eighteen dash one four eight dash twenty twenty-five is referred to the Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Next is communication number eighteen dash one four nine dash twenty twenty-five.
This ah, communication eighteen dash one four nine dash twenty twenty-five is referred to the same Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Next is communication number eighteen dash one five zero dash twenty twenty-five. This is certified as urgent by the Honorable Governor.
This ah, communication will be handled by the Committee Chair on Labor and Employment, Labor Employment, Civil Service, and Human Resource Development. The Honorable Makaira is recognized for the proper motion. Considering that this is certified as urgent by the Governor.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Considering that communication number eighteen dash one five zero dash twenty twenty-five is certified urgent in motion, I move that um, this, this communication be tackled later on on other matters under suspended rules and as a committee as a whole.
Did you mean after an assigned business?
Sorry, ah, rather after an assigned business.
Um, by the committee of the whole under suspended rules. There is a motion from the Honorable Makaira, seconded by the Honorable Montoho, the same is hereby approved. The Honorable ah, Harold Montes will ah, be the lead on this ah, communication. Please continue, Madam Secretary.
Next is communication number eighteen dash one five one dash twenty twenty-five.
Communication number eighteen dash one five one dash twenty twenty-five is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation and Ways and Means.
Next is communication number eighteen dash one five two dash twenty twenty-five.
Communication number eighteen dash one five two dash twenty twenty-five is referred to the Committee on Disaster Preparedness.
Next is communication number eighteen dash one five four dash twenty twenty-five.
Communication number eighteen one five four dash twenty twenty-five is referred to the Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Next is communication number eighteen dash one five five dash twenty twenty-five. This is certified as urgent in nature by the Honorable Governor.
Communications ah, one five five and will ah, just ah, ah, consider also communications one five six are all certified as urgent by the Honorable Governor. Ah, for one five five, the same will be handled by the Committee Chair on ah, in our com, committee of the whole, by the Committee Chair on Social Services. While ah, communication one five six will be by the health and ah, by the housing. Ah, the Honorable Makaira is recognized for the proper motion on communications number one five five and one five six.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Considering that communication number, numbers one five five and one five, one five six are both urgent in motion, I move that these communications be tackled later on after the unassigned business for the day under suspended rules and on a committee as a whole.
Alright, there is a motion ah, by the Honorable Makaira, seconded by all present, the same is hereby approved. Next item, ah, Madam Preside, ah, Madam Secretary? The Honorable ah, before that, the Honorable ah, Harold Montes is recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. This presentation would like to manifest for the inclusion of Committee Report Number eighteen dash ninety-eight dash twenty twenty-five along with its corresponding proposal solution Number eighteen dash one five one dash twenty twenty-five. It is under the Committee on Education, Culture, Arts, and Science and Technology under the suspended rules, Mr. Chair. I also move.
There is a motion ah, the Honorable Makaira ah, being the rules for today's session. Ah, the motion of the Honorable Montes for the inclusion of a committee report. Ah, will you be joining the motion for the amendment of the calendar to include the committee report?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer, I enjoin the motion of Honorable Montes.
There is a motion from Honorable Montes as well as the Honorable Makaira for the amendment of our calendar on committee reports. Any second to the motion? Any second to the motion, seconded by the Honorable Jimboi Dayang Hirang, by all present, the same is hereby approved. Are there any amendments in the calendar? Alright, Madam Secretary, can you continue with the calendar?
Next are petitions and memorials. Next is session of committee reports. First is Committee Report Number 18-88-2025 by the Committee on Labor, Employment, Civil Service, and Human Resource Development.
The Committee Chair on Labor, Employment, Civil Service, and Human Resource Development, the Honorable Harold Montez is hereby recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report Number 18-88-2025 dated October 22, 2025, with subject Communication Number 18-137-2025. It is a letter from the Honorable Governor Nelson L. Dayang Hirang dated October 6, 2025, respectfully forwarding the appointment of Engineer Berhilio O. Borgos Raya as Provincial Government Department Head under the Provincial Assessor's Office for Sangguneang Palalawigan Confirmation. Action taken, the committee held a meeting after the 15th regular session of the SP Hall to confirm matters pertaining to the above referred communication. Present this representation and the rest of the members of the committee. Findings, Mr. Chair, the said appointment was duly signed by the Honorable Governor on October 1, 2025. The same was forwarded to Sangguneang Palalawigan on October 6, 2025, and the appointee possesses all necessary qualifications and eligibility required for the position and none of the disqualification thereof. Therefore, Mrs. Chair, this Honorable Committee of the whole hereby recommends a passage, a resolution concurring the appointment of Engineer Berhilio O. Borgos Raya as Provincial Government Department Head under the Provincial Governor's Office, the Province of Dava Oriental, effective October 1 pursuant to Section 460D Republic Act 2160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991. But, Mr. Chair, I would like to move for the adoption of this committee report.
There is a motion to adopt the committee report of the Honorable Montez. Any second, seconded by the Honorable Jimboi Dayang Hirang, the same is hereby accepted.
Next is Committee Report Number 18-89-2025 by the Committee on Housing, Rural and Urban Development, and Land Utilization.
The Honorable Elijah Paul Palma Hill of the Committee on Housing, Rural and Urban Development, and Land Utilization is recognized on his committee report?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Communication, Committee Report Number 18-89-2025 under the Committee on Housing and Rural and Urban Development and Land Utilization, subject to Communication Number 18-97-2025, a letter from the Honorable Governor requesting for an authority to enter into a deed of use of rock for the use of real property with the Regional Trial Court City of Mati, of Mati City. I suppose everybody has a copy of this report. I would like to dispense the reading and move for its adoption. I do so move, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Please do continue, Honorable Palma Hill. Are you moving for the acceptance of your committee?
Acceptance, so yeah. Therefore, I'm moving for the acceptance of...
There is a motion to accept the Committee Report 18-89, seconded by all present, the same is hereby accepted.
Next is Committee Report Number 18-90-2025 by the Committee on Dangerous and Illegal Drugs.
The Committee Chair on Dangerous and Illegal Drugs, the not so dangerous, Honorable Palma Hill is recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report Number 18-90-2025, subject to the Communication Number 18-135-2025, a letter from the Honorable Governor Nelson L. Dayang Hirang dated last September 29, 2025, requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing him to enter into a memorandum of agreement for and in behalf of the province with the Municipal LGU of Manay for the treatment and rehabilitation assistance to drug dependents. I suppose everybody has a copy of this committee report, and I move for the acceptance and adoption of this committee report, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There is a motion from the Honorable Palma Hill for the acceptance of the committee report, any second to the motion, seconded by all present, the same is hereby accepted. Madam Secretary?
Next is Committee 18-91-2025 by the Committee on Housing, Rural and Urban Development, and Land Utilization.
The Honorable Committee Chair of the Committee on Housing, Rural and Urban Development, and Land Utilization is hereby recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report Number 18-91-2025, subject to the Communication Number 18-138-2025, a letter from the SB Secretary Melvin B. Lo Batanya of the Municipality of San Isidro, dated October 6, 2025, resubmiting the Municipal Ordinance Number 328-17-2025 for legislative review. I suppose everybody has a copy of this committee report, and I move for the acceptance and adoption of this committee report.
There is a motion to accept Committee Report Number 18-91-2025, any second to the motion, seconded by the Honorable, seconded by all present, the same is hereby accepted.
Next is Committee Report Number 18-92-2025 by the Committee on Public Information, Communication, and Technology and Media Affairs.
The Honorable Beverly Dayanan is hereby recognized for his committee report 18-92-2025.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Representation is made for Committee Report Number 18-92-2025, Communication Regarding Transmittal Letter Signed by Irene Di Tinong, Sangguneang Bayan Secretary of the Municipality of Taraguna, Dava Oriental, dated October 13, 2025, with a touch copy of the Municipal Ordinance Number 18, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the implementation of live streaming of the sessions of the Sangguneang Bayan of Taraguna, providing funds therefore and for other purposes, submitted for review and consideration by the Sangguneang Palalawigan. I move for the acceptance of the report, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the acceptance of Committee Report 18-92-2025, seconded by the Honorable Jimboi Dayang Hirang, the same is hereby accepted.
Thank you.
Next is Committee Report Number 18-93-2025 by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and Ways and Means.
The Honorable Chair on the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and Ways and Means, Honorable Ruchy Ravelo, is recognized for his committee report?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report Number 18-93-2025, with subject Communications Number 17-1291-2025, Pre- reviewed Appropriation Ordinance Number 3 Series of 2025, Calendar Year 2025 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 3 of the City of Mati, Dava Oriental, and Number 2 Communication Number 18-11-2025, a pre-reviewed Appropriation Ordinance Number 15 Series of 2024, regarding Calendar Year 2025 General Fund Annual Budget of the Municipality of Baganga, involving the amount of 524,015,154, and 286 pesos. Mr. Chair, honorable colleagues, I move to dispense with the reading of the whole content of this committee report and subsequently move for its adoption. I so move.
There is a motion to adopt Committee Report Number 18-93-2025. Any second to the motion, seconded by all present, the same is hereby adopted.
Next is Committee Report Number 18-94-2025 by the Committee on Economic Enterprise, Trade, Industry, and Investment.
The Committee on Economic Enterprise, Trade, and Investment, the Honorable Ruchy Ravelo is recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report Number 18-94-2025, the Committee on Economic Enterprise, Trade, Industry, and Investment, with the subject Communications Number 18-3134-2025, with the communication of the Honorable Governor Nelson Dayang Hirang requesting this body for the passage of a resolution authorizing him for and in behalf of the provincial government of Dava Oriental to execute and sign the contract of lease with coffee shop located at Tourism Complex, Barangay Don Martin Marundan, City of Mati, and Cagan Cafe situated at Pintatagan Welcome Park, Banay Banay, Dava Oriental. Honorable Presiding Officer, honorable colleagues, I move to dispense with the reading of the whole content of this committee report and subsequently move for its adoption. I so move.
There is a motion to adopt Committee Report 18-94 Series of 2025. Any second to the motion, seconded by all present, the same is hereby adopted.
Next is Committee Report Number 18-98-2025 by the Committee on Education, Arts, Culture, Science, and Technology. This will be reported by the Honorable Montez.
The Honorable Montez is recognized for his committee report?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report Number 18-98-2025, filed by the Committee on Education, Culture, Arts, Science, and Technology dated October 2, 2025, with Communication Number 18-129-2025. Present during the meeting is this representation and the rest of the members of the committee. Action taken, the committee held a meeting on October 15, 2025, at the Sangguneang Palalawigan Session Hall at SP Complex Government Center, the Hican City of Mati, to confirm matters pertaining to above subject referred communication. But, Mr. Chair, before I proceed, I guess that all members of the committee has already been, and members of this honorable body has already been distributed copy earlier, I would like to dispense the reading of this committee report Number 18-98 and subsequently move for the adoption of the same.
There is a motion to adopt Committee Report 18-98 Series of 2025. Any second to the motion, seconded by the Honorable Jimboi, by all present, the same is hereby adopted.
Next is Calendar Business. First under Calendar Business is Unfinished Business None. Next is Business for the Day. First under Business for the Day is Proposed Resolution Number 18-141-2025 authored and sponsored by the Honorable Harold A. Montez.
The Honorable Harold A. Montez is recognized for his proposed Resolution Number 18-141 Series of 2025.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Proposed Resolution Number 18-141-2025, a resolution concurring the appointment of Engineer Berhilio O. Borgos Raya as Provincial Government Department Head under the Provincial Assessor's Office, Province, this Province, effective October 1, 2025 pursuant to Section 463D RA 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991. I also move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion for the approval of Resolution Number 18-141 Series of 2025. Any second to the motion, seconded by all present, the same is hereby approved. Congratulations, Engineer Borgos.
Next are three proposed resolutions. These are proposed resolution numbers 18-142-2025, 18-143, and 18-144, all authored and sponsored by the Honorable Elijah A. Palma Hill.
The Honorable Elijah Paul Palma Hill is recognized for his three proposed resolution?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Resolutions Number 18-142-2025, a resolution authorizing the Honorable Nelson L. Dayang Hirang for and on behalf of the provincial government of Dava Oriental to enter into a deed of use of rock with the Supreme Court of the Philippines, duly represented by its Honorable Court Administrator, Honorable Maria Teresa Dolores Gomez Estuesta, for the use of real property covered by the TCT number T-28448 located in Barangay de Hican, City of Mati, Dava Oriental. And, proposed Resolution 18-143-2025, a resolution granting the authority to the Honorable Nelson L. Dayang Hirang for and in behalf of the Province of Dava Oriental to enter into a deed of memorandum of agreement, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the municipal local government unit of Manay, represented by its municipal mayor, Honorable John Marco M. Dayang Hirang, for the treatment and rehabilitation of its assistance to drug dependence. And 18, proposed Resolution 18-144-2025, a resolution confirming the validity of Municipal Ordinance Number 328-17-2025 of the Municipality of San Isidro, considering that the same is within the prescribed powers of the Sangguneang Bayan pursuant to Section 20 of RA 7160 or the Local Government Code. Considering that everyone has been given a copy of these proposed resolutions, I now move for the passage and approval of the proposed resolutions, resolutions 18-142, 143, and 144, all Series of 2025 under omnibus motion. I do so move, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There is an omnibus motion for the passage of Resolutions 142, 143, and 144, all Series of 2025, and a second to the omnibus motion, seconded by all present, the same is hereby approved.
Next is Proposed Resolution Number 18-145-2025 authored and sponsored by the Honorable Beverly M. Dayanan.
The Honorable Beverly M. Dayanan is recognized for his proposed Resolution 18-145-2025.
Correction, Honorable Presiding Officer, I am her.
I stand corrected. Of course, how can a beautiful lady be missed by calling him his? Not unless if you went to Thailand. The Honorable Dayanan is recognized for her...
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Proposed Resolution.
Okay. Representation is made for the passage of the Proposed Resolution Number 18-145-2025, a resolution confirming the approval of the passage of the Municipal Ordinance Number 18 S. 2025 of the Municipality of Taraguna, Dava Oriental, entitled an ordinance authorizing the implementation of the live streaming of the sessions of the Sangguneang Bayan of Taraguna, providing funds therefore and for the purposes subject to existing laws, rules, and regulations relative thereto. So, I move for the approval and adoption of the said resolution, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the approval of Resolution Number 18-145 Series of 2025 by the Honorable Dayanan. Any second to the motion, seconded by all present, the same Resolution 18-145-2025 is hereby approved.
Next, next are three proposed resolutions. These are proposed resolution numbers 18-146-2025, 18-147, and 18-148, all authored and sponsored by the Honorable Ruchy M. Ravelo.
The Honorable Ruchy M. Ravelo is recognized for his three proposed resolutions?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Still Chair, I have here Proposed Resolutions Number 18-146-2025, a resolution declaring the Appropriation Ordinance Number 3 Series of 2025, the City of Mati, Dava Oriental, operative in its entirety, subject to some conditions, and the Resolutions Number 18, Resolution Number 18-147-2025, a resolution declaring the Appropriation Ordinance Number 15 Series of 2024 of the Municipality of Baganga, Dava Oriental, operative in its entirety, subject to some conditions. Honorable Presiding, Honorable, Honorable Presiding Officer, honorable colleagues, I move for the approved, passage and approval of the two proposed resolutions, 18-146 and 18-147-2025, under omnibus motion. I so move.
There is an omnibus motion for the approval of Resolutions 146 and 147, all Series of 2025, and a second to the motion, seconded by all present, the same is hereby approved. The Honorable Ruchy M. Ravelo is still recognized for his proposed Resolution 18-148.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Proposed Resolution Number 18-148-2025, a resolution authorizing the provincial governor, Honorable Nelson L. Dayang Hirang, to enter into a contract of lease for and in behalf of the provincial government of Dava Oriental between and among the Subangan Coffee Shop situated within the Tourism Complex, Barangay Don Martin Marundan, City of Mati, and Cagan Cafe located at Pintatagan Welcome Park, Municipality of Banay Banay, all this province. I move for the passage and approval of this proposed resolution, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the passage of Proposed Resolution Number 18-148 Series of 2025... There is a motion for the passage of proposed Resolution Number 18-148, Series of 2025, and a second to the motion? Seconded by all present, the same is hereby approved.
Next is proposed Resolution Number 18-151-2025. This will be presented by the Honorable Montez.
The Honorable Harold A. Montez, the Committee Chair on Education, Culture, Arts, Science, and Technology, is hereby recognized for his proposed resolution?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here proposed Resolution Number 18-151-2025. It is a resolution authorizing the Provincial Governor, the Honorable Nelson L. Deang Hirang, to enter into a memorandum of agreement for and in behalf of the Provincial Government of Dava Oriental with Immaculate Heart of Mary Academy, represented by its Principal, Ms. Gloria P. Shang, to formalize the work immersion partnership intended for senior high school students. Whereas the Provincial Governor, the Honorable Nelson L. Deang Hirang sought an authority from this August body to enter into memorandum of agreement with Immaculate Heart of Mary for work immersion partnership in his letter dated September 25, 2025, dictated with Communication Number 18-129-2025, whereas Chapter 3, Section 465B16 of the Local Government of 1991 states that the Provincial Governor, as the Chief or the Executive of the Provincial Government, shall represent the Province and Ls' business transactions and insign on behalf of all bonds, contracts, and obligations, and such other documents upon the authority of the Sangunyang Panlalawigan pursuant to law or ordinance. Whereas this August body adheres to the policy of the state to establish, maintain, and support a complete, adequate, and integrated system of education relevant to the needs of the people, the country, and the society at large pursuant to Section 2 Republic Act 10, 533, otherwise known as the Enhanced Basic Education Act of 2013. Therefore, Mr. Chair, I would like to move for approval of this proposed resolution.
There is a motion from the Honorable Harold Montez for the approval of Resolution 18-151, Series of 2025. Any second to the motion? Seconded by all present, the same proposed resolution is hereby approved.
Next is proposed ordinances for second reading, none. Next is unassigned business. Under unassigned business are urgent requests from the Honorable Governor under Communication Numbers 18-150-2025, 18-155-2025, and 18-156-2025, and the concern of Honorable Dayanan regarding the porridge or the lugaw.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The Honorable Attorney Maria Lady Hope Makaira is recognized for her motion?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Considering that Communication Numbers 18-150-2025, 18-156-2025, and Communication Number 18-155-2025 are certified urgent in nature, I move that we suspend our House rules and we convert our... we convert the body into a committee as a whole.
Before ruling on the motion, will you also include in the Committee of the Whole the concern of the Honorable Dayanan on her privileged speech earlier, which we... which she requested that the same be tackled under unassigned business?
Um, yes, Mr. Presiding Officer. I also move that we also include under unassigned business the concern of Honorable Board Member Beverly Dayanan.
So that we can dispose altogether these four concerns. There is a motion from the Honorable Makaira to convert ourselves into a committee of the whole under suspended rules, so that we can discuss these four items. Is there any more... is there any second to the motion? Seconded by all present, we now convert ourselves into the Committee of the Whole. First item?
First item, item is regarding Communication Number 18-150-2025 regarding the passage of an appropriate legislative re... abolition and funding of various existing plantilla positions in the Provincial Government of Dava Oriental.
The Honorable Harold Montez is recognized for this concern?
Uh, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Uh, it is a urgent... a certified urgent by the Honorable Governor for a passage of appropriate legislative action for the abolition and funding of various existing plantilla positions in the Province, Provincial Government of Dava Oriental. The proposed abolition and funding are aligned with our strategic priorities and are necessary to enhance the operational efficiency, improve service delivery, and respond to the emerging needs of our constituents. The Honorable Governor requested the Sangunyang Panlalawigan to abolish the following positions: Letter A, Veterinarian 2. It is coming from the Office of the Provincial Veterinary. And, uh, Letter B, Veterinarian 2, Office of the Provincial Veterinary also. The Honorable Governor also requested the Sangunyang Panlalawigan to fund, um, the following positions: Letter A, Veterinari 3 with salary grade 19-1, Office of the Provincial Veterinary. Letter B, Veterinarian 3 with salary grade 19-1, Office of the Provincial Veterinary. Letter C, Project Development Officer 2 with salary grade 15-1, Office of the Provincial Veterinary. Letter D, Engineer 4, Agriculturalist and Bio System, salary grade 22-1, um, from the OPH Lupon. Letter E, Medical Officer 3 with salary grade number 21-1, the OPH Lupon. Letter F, Medical Technologist 1, salary grade 11-1, the OPH Lupon. Letter G, salary grade 15-1, the OPH Lupon. Nars 1, salary grade 15-1, the OPH Lupon. And also Nars 1 with salary grade 15-1, the OPH Lupon also. Administrative 1... Admin... Officer 1, salary grade 1, the OPMC. Administrative aid 4, salary grade 4-1, OPMC. Respiratory therapist 1, salary grade 1, the OPMC. Nars 2, 2 Nars 2 with salary grade, uh, 16-1, the OPMC. And 3, Nars 1 with salary grade 15-1, the OPMC. And another Nars attendant 1 with salary grade 4-1, the OPMC. Uh, upon further review, some positions are not found in calendar year 2015... at 2025 personnel schedule, the province does. There is a need for the creation of the funding of the new positions accordingly to with one Veterinarian 3, SG 1-1, Office of the Provincial Veterinarian, and one Engineer 4, SG 22-1, Office of the Provincial Agriculturalist and, uh, Office of the Provincial Agriculturalist for the Agriculture and Bio Systems, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Montez. Um, for consideration in our Committee of the Whole is the request of the Governor. I think it is, uh, in the letter itself. Before we will allow, after we convert back to our plenary, the rendition of the Committee of the Whole report by the Honorable Montez, is there anyone who would like to ask questions in relation to this, uh, request of the Governor? There is none? Uh, Honorable Montez, can we have the Committee of the Whole report after we convert back ourselves to our plenary under the same suspended rules?
Yeah, after na?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Because we are still under Committee of the Whole.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, do I need to move for the adoption of the, you know? Uh...
I think the observation is already incorporated in the Committee of the Whole report, so we'll just, uh, have the same adopted after sa pagplenary na na tonya.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Montez. The second concern, Madam Secretary?
Second concern is regarding Communication Number 18-155-2025 for the passage of a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor to enter into a MOA with the Department of Social Welfare and Development.
The Honorable Montoho is recognized for this concern? The Committee Chair on Social Services?
Mr. Presiding Officer, I have here a... the... our Governor had a... written a letter through our Vice Governor, Glenda Monet Rabat Gaeta. It is a request for this August body for a passage of a resolution authorizing the Governor to enter into a MOA for and in behalf of the Province of Dava Oriental with a DSWD to facilitate the implementation of assistance individuals in crisis situation with a total funding allocation of 20 million pesos. And, uh, I would like to... should I read nao the, you know? Committee of the Whole report later na?
Uh, if the... if you have a Committee of the Whole report, you can do it well after we revert back to our plenary. But if, before that, are there any questions on this memorandum of agreement between the DSWD with the download of 20 million pesos to the covers of the province purposely for IX? I think copies of the MOA were already given to each members? Hearing na? Uh, the Honorable Montoho, thank you. Uh, we can, uh, have the necessary Committee of the Whole report when we go back to the plenary under suspended rules. On our next concern, Madam Secretary?
Next concern is regarding Com... This is regarding a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor to enter into a deed of absolute sale.
The Honorable Elijah Paul Palmahill on the Committee on Housing, Rural, and Urban Development is recognized for this concern?
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Uh, for the Communication Number 18-156-2025, this pertains to the urgent request of our Governor for an authority to enter into a deed of absolute sale with the heirs of Benito G. Rabat for the acquisition of the lot situated at Barangay de Hican, Mati City, intended for the development and use of the Mati Airport Terminal. The heirs duly represented by Maria Glenda Monet Rabat Gaeta has signified their intent to sell the parcel of land described as Lot Number 6-A-2 PSD Number 11-170253, containing an area of 5,389 square meters, more or less covered by the TCT number, uh, 143-2024001489, which the Provincial Government has allocated an amount of 6.6 million for the purchase. Uh, if there are questions from the members of this August body, I believe, Honorable Presiding Officer, we have a representative from the Provincial Assessor's Office. Uh, we have here Engineer Geng Serano of the Provincial Assessor's Office to shed light on this matter, so may we... may we recognize, uh, Engineer Serano, Honorable Presiding Officer?
Um, Honorable Makaira is recognized, uh, for us to deal with the motion of the Honorable Palmahill?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just have a few questions.
With, uh...
With the...
Honorable Palmahill or with, uh...
Represent... with the representative from the PLGU?
All right. Um, yes. Would you like to present first before...
Uh, is there a presentation, sorry?
Ah, I... I don't know also, Honorable Makaira. All right. Uh, can you take the podium, uh, Engineer Serano?
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer.
I recognize you because you are our rules. And for her to be recognized. Tenorate, he... she already took the podium. Yes, uh, Honorable Makaira, you can now ask questions to Engineer Serano?
Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer. Um, good afternoon, Engineer.
Good afternoon, Attorney.
Uh, Engineer, I just have a question regarding the, uh, the purchase of the property. This, um, this lot, TCT Number 143-20... um, 2024001489, um, this property, um, this will be used for the expand... uh, um, what will be the use of this property, Engineer?
For the Bureau of Fire and the water tank facilities.
Yes, Engineer. And this, um, this piece of property is, uh, important in the, um, for the Mati Airport, is that correct?
Yes, Attorney.
And there is no other property that, um, that will suffice? And this... and this is the only property that can be used for the Bureau of Fire and the water tank, correct?
Yes, Attorney.
That will be all, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Thank you, Honorable Makaira. Is there any member who would like to ask, Engineer Serano? All right. I will ask a few questions, Engineer. The Honorable, uh, Palmahill made mention that the consideration is 6 million, more or less. Your contract says it's 8,83,500.
Yes, Attorney.
So, it's 8 million?
Yes, Attorney.
The square meter is 5,389 square meters?
Yes, Attorney.
And if you divide that by 8,83,500, that would be how much per square meter?
If I may, Attorney, the 5,389 square meters, as per appraisal, is 1,500, at 1,500. And the PLGU will be shouldering the transfer fees for the property.
The PLGU?
Yeah.
And how will that answer my question? My question is, if you have 5,389 square meters and the consideration is 8,83,500, how much is that per square meter?
The 8 million in total, it is already included with the transfer fees. So, if 5,389 square meters at 1,5, I think it is 6 million?
All right. The intention is to include the payment for the necessary taxes, you're referring to the...
DIR.
Uh, 6% capital gains tax and the 1.5 documentary stamp tax?
Yes, Presiding Officer.
And the transfer tax that is due and demandable by the city government of, uh, one half of 1%?
Yes, yes, Attorney.
You included that in the consideration?
Yes, Attorney.
And why did you not include a provision? I haven't seen here any provision to the effect that says, uh, with the inclusion, uh, the vendor should... the vendee should now be paying for the necessary taxes. It is not here. Although, the National Internal Revenue Code says the one who is selling will be the one who will be paying for the taxes.
Mr. Presiding?
But that is an assumption.
We have here the approved POW by the Honorable Governor, including the acquisition of the 5,389 plus the transfer fees in a total of 8.8 plus million.
The document that is being considered by the Sangunyang Panlalawigan now does not have any of that document that you said. What you are seeking to approve here before the Sangunyang Panlalawigan is the deed of absolute sale. And the deed of absolute sale says nothing with respect to the payment of the taxes. Isn't that a little bit dangerous? If we give the entire amount without even stipulating that the vendee should now be paying for the taxes that is due to the national government as well as to the local government?
Uh, Attorney Badu, I drafted the DOAS, and then we... we can give a copy of the approved program of work, Attorney... Presiding, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Again, that program of work is not part of the deed of absolute sale. What controls are the provisions of the deed of absolute sale where the same does not have any provision that says it is now the vendee with this amount that should be paying the DIR as well as the City Treasurer's Office of Mati? Will you not recommend that there will be an amendment to the deed of absolute sale that will include a provision that would clearly stipulate?
Yes.
That after the execution of this document, the vendee should now be...
Yes.
accountable for all the taxes? Will you not recommend that, Engineer Serano?
We will recommend that, Mr. Presiding.
All right. Now finally, the parties here include the name Maria Glenda Monet Rabat Gaeta. Is she the same Vice Governor of our province, ma'am?
Yes, Attorney.
All right. Thank you for that information. I have no more other question. I saw the Honorable Dayanan raising her hand. Is that question geared towards, uh, Engineer Serano? All right. Uh, you... you can end to me? Oh, you can take the podium, uh, Honorable Beverly M. Dayanan, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer. This is with regard...
This is with regards to the tax, no ha? Um, Mister Honorable Presiding Officer, in the absence of any specification as to the one to pay for the, uh, capital gains tax, that is if the vendor is an individual, otherwise if it's an institutional, it should be, uh, creditable with holding tax? Yes. So again, I said, in the absence of the specification in the document, it is always the payment of the tax always rests at on the side of the vendor and not on the vendor, Mister Honorable Presiding Officer?
I agree with the statement of the Honorable Dayanan, but letting go of more than two million pesos, we should make sure that there is no room for any interpretation except a clear and defined provision that says it should be the vendor who should be paying it. In fact, in my earlier statement, and I know Attorney Makaira will agree with me, the National Internal Revenue Code says it should be the vendor because of the assumed profit. Assumed because this is not a viable transaction. So, the suggestion I had earlier was we should make sure that it will be part of the deed of sale. Deed of absolute sale, I mean, that provision that says it should now be the vendor who will pay for the necessary taxes.
Yes, you are heard loud and clear, Mister Honorable Presiding Officer. If it's about the two million, whether it is part of it, if it's part of it, then there shouldn't be any problem or any concern for that matter. However, the concern would only arise if it's exclude, meaning on top of the two million pesos, Mister Honorable Presiding Officer?
I think that is now the concern of both parties where at the end of the negotiation, the honorable Governor already requested for an authority to sign the document. What is important is it is clear that after the execution of the document, the provincial government of Dava Oriental would no longer be liable for any incidental taxes relative to the transaction. If there be a disparity as to the amount of two million or that of eight million, then I think that would be up to the parties. And I am just making sure that the government, the province is, uh, uh, already not liable for these taxes, Honorable Dayanan.
Yes, correct, Mister Honorable Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Beverly M. Dayanan. Are there any more questions? Uh, do you have anything more to say?
No more.
Engineer, thank you for your time and thank you for taking up questions from us. Uh, the last concern under the committee of the whole is the concern of the Honorable Dayanan. Would you like to propose that a... What is the legislative action that you would like to propose in relation to your, uh, privilege speech, Honorable Dayanan?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. This with regards to my privilege speech a while ago, urging for the integration of the porridge as part of our, um, emergency response operation that as we see it, uh, very fit and needed. I propose to institutionalize the preparation and distribution of the porridge as part of our local, um, disaster response plans. And so too, just as like the emergency kit, it would also be prepared as well um, in our barangay. And in fact, there is now a current move to bring the emergency response in every aspect to the puruk level as is now being promoted by no less than our head, Ednar Dayang Hirang. So I propose for the integration of the porridge in our local disaster response plans, Mister Honorable Presiding Officer?
Alright, are you suggesting, Honorable Dayanan, that, uh, you will be sponsoring a resolution that will be addressed to our provincial disaster so that, uh, there might be a chance that this will be considered and the same be integrated, uh, later on as they would work on their plans?
Yes, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Dayanan. Are there questions to the Honorable Dayanan on her proposal? Uh, on, uh, her concern in the privilege speech? There being none, thank you, Honorable Dayanan. That will be the last concern on our committee of the whole.
Thank you, Presiding Officer.
The Honorable Ruchi Ravelo is recognized?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. If the body agrees and with the indulgence of the assigned committee on rules chair, I also would like to include, uh, later, uh, a resolution commending Doctor Roy J. Ponce, Dorso President, on his study presented for the Province of Dava Oriental entitled Economic Development Evaluation Using the Provincial Product Accounts of the P S A.
Alright, there is a proposal, uh, by the Honorable Ruchi Ravelo that we also extend a resolution to the, to the good doctor, Roy Ponce. Are there any questions to the proposal of the Honorable Ravelo? Hearing none, I think we are already through with our concern on the committee of the whole. The Honorable Attorney Maria Lady Hope J. Makaira is recognized for his, her motion?
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Ay! After pa, convert pa.
I move that we revert to plenary under the same suspended rules.
There is a motion to revert to our plenary under the same suspended rules approved by all present. The same is hereby approved. The Honorable Makaira is recognized for, uh, the... Ah, di na ta mag amend sa calendar, no? Kay, suspended rules na ta. We have five concerns, uh, during this time. We are under suspended rules. I would now like to recognize the Honorable Harold Montes for, uh, the rendition of his committee of the whole report and the subsequent proposal, proposed resolution relative to the committee of the whole report.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. This is a committee of the whole report number eighteen dash ninety-five dash twenty twenty-five. This is with regards to the, um, request of the, urgent request of the Honorable Governor for the passage, uh, abolition and funding of various existing plantilla position in the Province of Dava Oriental. The proposed changes aim to optimize the organizational structure and enhance efficiency and align the job titles and salary grade with the involving needs of the Province of Dava Oriental, Mister Chair. Therefore, this accomplishing such, the committee reheberred recommends this August body to pass an ordinance approving the abolition and, and, and funding of various existing plantilla positions in the Province of Dava Oriental, Mister Chair.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee of the whole report eighteen dash ninety-five, series of twenty twenty-five, seconded by all present. The same is hereby adopted. Did I hear you correctly, Honorable Montes, that, uh, you would be, in relation to this one, you would be sponsoring an ordinance?
Yes, Madam, yes, Mister Chair.
And, uh, will you be scheduling for a second reading of that ordinance today?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Alright, uh, and most likely subsequently the third reading?
Yes, Mister Chair, if, if the, our, what you call this?
Honorable Montes, do you already have a copy of the proposed, uh, ordinance with you? So that the members would also be able to see the proposed ordinance?
Yes, Mister Chair. Already been distributed earlier?
Ah, there is already a copy, alright. Uh, okay, on second reading, anyway, we are under suspended rules?
Yeah.
And this is certified urgent?
If I may be allowed, uh...
Please do, Honorable Montes.
I will be reading an ordinance approving the abolition and creation and funding of various plantilla positions in the Province of Dava Oriental, Mister Chair, whereas the local chief executive has requested the Sangguniang Panlalawigan to pass an ordinance relative to abolishing and creating and funding various plantilla positions under the provincial government offices in this province, whereas the said action are aligned to the strategic priorities of the government and deemed necessary to enhance operational efficiency, improve service delivery and respond to emerging needs of our constituents. Whereas Section Seventy-Six Republic Act Seventy-One Sixty, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, provides that every local government unit shall design and implement its own organizational structure and staffing pattern taking into consideration its service requirement and financial capability subject to the minimum standard of the guidelines prescribed by the Server Service Commission, Mister Chair. Uh, and section one, um, it is the abolition of position which, uh, I've mentioned earlier during our committee of the whole report. And section three, for the funding of vacant, funding of vacant and unfunded positions which already been mentioned earlier, Mister Chair. For section four, it is the implement, for the implementation and the execution of this ordinance shall be subject to the existing and applicable server service laws, rules and regulation and shall be in accordance with relevant budget circulars of the Department of Budget and Management and other pertinent laws therefore. Section five, the repealing clause seeks the separability clause and section seven, the effectiveness of this ordinance will shall be take effect on January one of twenty twenty-six.
Alright, thank you, Honorable Harold Montes. Uh, there is a proposal for a passage on second reading, the proposed provincial ordinance number eighteen dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-five. Before we move for its passage, may I ask from the members present if you have questions uh, to this proposed provincial ordinance? I think all of the provisions are self-explanatory. The funding for this one, Honorable Montes, will be provided by the twenty twenty-six, uh, general fund and the effectiveness will be on January one, twenty twenty-six. Hearing none, uh, would you be sponsoring a motion for the passage on second reading of your proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-five?
Hi, Mister Chair, I move for the passage, uh, of an ordinance approving the abolition and and funding the various existing plantilla positions in the Province of Dava Oriental, Mister Chair, for second reading.
There is a motion for approval on second reading, proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-five and is second to the motion, seconded by all present. The same is hereby approved on second reading. The Honorable Montes, would you be, uh, requesting that this be calendared on third reading in our order of business? Is that your intention? The Honorable Makaira is recognized for the necessary amendment being our committee on rules for today's session?
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. I move that we amend our calendar to include the necessary proposed provincial ordinance?
Eighteen dash zero eight?
Eighteen dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-five.
On third?
On third?
And final reading?
And final reading.
Alright, there is a motion from the Honorable Makaira and is second, seconded by all members present, the same is hereby approved. Please take note, Madam Secretary?
Noted, yeah.
Our second concern is on, uh, the committee of, on social services. The Honorable, uh, Don Go Montoho is, John Erwin G. Montoho is recognized? For his, will you be rendering, sir, a committee report, committee of the whole report? On, on his committee of the whole report?
Mister Presiding Officer, I have here a committee of the whole report number eighteen dash ninety-six dash twenty twenty-five with a subject communication number eighteen dash one fifty-five dash twenty twenty-five. Uh, this Honorable Sangguniang Panlalawigan has considered the herein request of the provincial governor, Honorable Nelson El Dayang Hirang, to, uh, with sense of urgency, thereby converting the plenary into a committee of the whole in order to act forthwith on the above mentioned communication through usual course of action findings. Communication number eighteen dash one fifty-five dash twenty twenty-five pertains to the letter from the provincial governor, the Honorable Nelson El Dayang Hirang, dated October twenty-one requesting, twenty twenty-five requesting this August body for the immediate passage of a resolution authorizing him to enter into a memorandum of agreement for and in behalf of the provincial government of Dava Oriental with the Department of Social Welfare and Development, Field Office Eleven to facilitate the implementation of the assistance to individuals in crisis situation or the A X program with a total funding allocation of twenty million pesos. Pursuant to Executive Order Number Two Two One, series of twenty zero three and Executive Order Number One Three Seven, series of twenty twenty-one, the D S W D respectively implements crisis intervention through the A X program. The D S A W D and the L G U are partners in the implementation of the social services for the poor, vulnerable, vulnerable, vulnerable and marginalized sectors. Consequently, this agreement is deemed necessary to ensure effective and efficient delivery of A X to qualified beneficiaries. Uh, recommendation, pursuant to chapter three, section four six five of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one states that the provincial gover, states that the provincial governor as the chief executive of the provincial government shall represent the province in all its business transactions and sign in its behalf of all bonds, contracts and obligations and such other documents upon authority of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan or pursuant to law or ordinance. In view thereof and in support of the implementation of social services for the poor, vulnerable and marginalized sectors in this province, the committee of the whole favorably, favorably recommends to this August body for the passage of a resolution authorizing the provincial governor, the Honorable Nelson El Dayang Hirang for and in behalf of the provincial government of Dava Oriental to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development uh, Field Office Eleven represented by its regional director, Ruelo Di Aradanas to facilitate the implementation of the assistance to individuals in crisis situations program with a total funding allocation of twenty million pesos. I move that we adopt this, uh, committee of the whole, uh, report.
There is a motion from the Honorable Montoho for the adoption of the committee of the whole report number eighteen dash ninety-six dash twenty twenty-five and is second to the motion, seconded by all present, the same is hereby adopted. The Honorable Montoho is also recognized for your proposed resolution, eighteen dash one four nine, series of twenty twenty-five.
Mister Presiding Officer, I have here proposed resolution number eighteen dash one four nine dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the provincial governor, Honorable Nelson El Dayang Hirang for and in behalf of the provincial government of Dava Oriental to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development Field Office Eleven represented by its regional director, Ruelo Di Aradanas